This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's 3 o'clock and we would like to call this meeting to an end. If you can all stand up to do the pledge of allegiance.
We're in allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so for the ones in attendance, if you guys can just take the time to silence your phones. And for the ones online, if you can mute yourselves. We'll go ahead and we'll do a roll call. So we have Bob, Ed, Carol, Doug, and myself present. Item number four, the approval of the final agenda.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll move.
Does staff have any changes that we need to know about?
No.
No?
I'll move to approve the final agenda.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second by Bob. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public comment? Okay.
I have two people sign up for public comment. First is Gary Edson. He's on Avila regarding agenda item 9A. And if you, he wasn't sure if you wanted to speak, so if you. Yes. You come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, give your name and where you live for the record, please. And you have three minutes.
My name's Gary Edson. I live in, at the 10548 Avila Circle. I just wanted to be sure that milling and the resurfacing moved forward because I've heard it's been kind of delayed on again, off again. And it's caught a, caused a delay of other things in the community like cleaning the sidewalks and the gutters. And it has ripple effect, obviously. So I'm looking forward to the fact that that gets moved forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Gary, are you aware that the reason for the most recent deferral?
I was not. I'm relatively new.
There was a late request by the HOA president.
Okay.
That not only do we do the roads, but we also clean or repair gutters.
You mean this, the, yeah.
Valley gutters.
The valley gutters.
Yeah.
So that's why it wasn't already started.
Okay.
So we went back and we had to determine what needed to be done, which the district did.
Was it not only, was it a repair also of the gutters where they were broken?
That's, that's what she requested. The original road was just for the road.
I get you.
So she came and said, we'd like to also get the gutters. Made sense when you could do one.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want to do it any other way.
You don't want it, otherwise you just bust everything out. So Keith went out with the contractor. We got a different bid of additional more monies, another 15,000, I believe. Anyway, that went to P-PAC. They approved it. It's coming to us today.
Okay.
But that's why it got delayed.
Well, it's nice of you to clarify that. I just wanted to speak with enthusiasm about moving forward.
Appreciate it.
And then look forward to seeing the new road.
Thank you. Well, sweetheart.
All right, next is Judy Peek. She wants to speak about streetlights and potholes.
Judy Peek, Eagle Point Circle. I was wondering if we could get that pothole fixed going into our neighborhood. I mean, every time I go through there, I think I'm going to miss it and I hit that pothole. So people had complained that a couple of tires had been messed up.
Is that on our road, Judy?
Yes.
The road going back?
Yes, just before you turned to go into the church, the turning lane, there's a pothole about this.
On the right-hand side, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because I've hit it about three times.
Yes. And the other thing that was going to ask about the streetlights going in, they're not working?
If they're FPL, they may not. They aren't doing nothing, nothing.
I will, I will give you feedback on the two items. So regarding the potholes, I can tell you, I personally entered the tickets and I had requested staff to enter the tickets multiple times. So I have done it multiple times and I know staff has it. I entered five tickets for Gateway Boulevard, two tickets for your area, two tickets for Griffin, and then one from Commerce Rate. That's the only one that I know was done from the county.
What are these, like work orders?
Yes, so you go on the county and then you can just enter the location.
The request for action.
The request for action.
What we're asking, they're not our roads, they're their roads.
They're the county roads.
They're county roads, yeah. Yeah, so we did it and then I went and I follow up. It doesn't give you a ticket number. That's the only thing. And then I did follow up with an email, but it's.
Okay.
It's out there.
All right.
Yeah, and regarding the FPL lights, I guess we're doing, if it's a, if it's just a regular, we did approve that $17,000 repair that, right? So I know they started, I think they did one near Stony Brook or somewhere somebody mentioned.
They did a, I just paid a bill for Bentley. They made quite a few repairs on the streetlights.
So yes, and then the rest will be one, we're doing the, you know, the whole upgrade with FPL. So that, we're still waiting on it. I know we paid them for the design and the plan and everything else. So we're waiting on FPL for that. But if it is one of the ones that we approve on the $17,000, staff can follow up.
We'll follow up.
Okay, and while I'm here, one other thing. When you go in to the entrance there, my question is, is that road your easement or our easement?
What road?
Going into our neighborhood from Gateway Boulevard?
Is our CDD road from the edge of the right-of-way, the right-of-way in that area is, I believe, 150 feet. So it'd be 75-foot half. So you have to go out after you turn into the road. Part of that is the county over for usually about the back of the sidewalks. Then it becomes the CDD's road all the way back to the little fun park.
Okay.
And then it's got a right, right-of-way width such that when you turn off left going north into your addition, you leave us and go into yours.
Okay, is there any way to get that, the sprinklers running on that grass that goes along there? Because the grass is dying.
Do we have common area in that area that we have charge of? I'm sure we do.
If it's Eagle Point, then.
Yeah, we do have.
So we'll, we'll look into the sprinkler system as well.
That's it.
Now, keep in mind, that sprinkler system will only go to the edge of the right-of-way, which is probably 30-foot half at the most. And then it goes into your association in the church on the other side.
Okay.
So we could have green grass and then go brown if you guys don't water it on either side.
Are you talking about the brown area that's on your side, not on the church side, right?
Yes.
So it's half. Irrigation only gets half. And so that I do recall.
Okay.
And I just don't recall.
But it's all the way to the road line, yeah?
Yeah, so that's the thing. Like I just don't recall which direction did the sprinkler go. Is it road going in or is it middle going out towards the road? That I don't know.
Okay.
Well, if that road, if that road's got a 50-foot right-of-way, 25-foot half, and half that's 12-foot of, is the pavement, means you only have 13 feet that we have control of that's grass. But there's a lot farther more grass to go over to the back of those lots. So your association has got a big chunk of that area to water also.
We'll address ours.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. Thank you.
I don't have any other requests to speak or no one in chat and there weren't any emails or faxes. All right. Local achievements and recognitions. Do we have any one that we want to recognize? Staff, no?
Lord.
I do want to touch, we did have, Maddie was our intern and her last day was Tuesdays, was on Tuesday. We, we did, I believe, send her off with a letter of recommendation moving forward in her career. But we are, instead of having an intern, we have converted that position into like a part-time public works inspector. Instead of it just being an intern that we have rotating every two years and have to retrain, so. But she served for the, with the district for two.
Just over a year.
Just over a year, so.
Is she going to school or finishing a degree?
Yeah, she's wrapping up her masters and she'll be graduating, I think, in May.
So she's looking for a little bit, something farther up the food chain?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go to item number seven, advisory committees and items and report. Do we have any committee members that would like to? I see it's something for P-PAC.
Well, I don't know who's here from P-PAC. Joe, are you, no, no. Damn, Phil Meesey called me, told me he couldn't make it at the last minute. But they voted, is this the time to bring this up?
Yeah, otherwise I can take it too since I'm liaison. Go ahead, if you want. At the P-PAC meeting last week, there was, they have one opening to replace Mark Eversman. He resigned to work on the landscape committee as their chair, well, hopefully their chair. There were two candidates and P-PAC, after deliberating, they had a vote twice, voted for Martin to be the, to fill that vacancy on P-PAC. And they're just looking for your approval to finalize that.
So I'll make a motion. We approve his appointment as a member of P-PAC, Martin.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let's call it off for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it was very interesting because both candidates that came were super qualified. I mean, they had credentials up the kazoo. And, but Marty was chosen. And I would hope that, I don't forget, I don't remember the other person's name, but I hope he stays active and involved too because he was definitely qualified.
All right, thank you. So nothing else? Approval of the minutes?
So moved.
I have.
You have an edit?
Yeah, on the resolution 2317, I got a question, the budget line item purchasing. And I voted for this, but I was, what I thought I voted for and what I see and hear is, was kind of different.
What line, what line is it?
Line 84 through 96. And what did we do? What do we, what did we vote? I think we went from 30,000.
It stated 30,000. We, we, it had never been ratified. We had been operating that way all along. It was never put on paper that Chelsea and I have the $30,000 limit before we would need to come to the board. We will still come to you if a line item is more than $30,000 or if we need to transfer it from one department to another since you've approved those chunks of money for those specific areas in the budget. Or if we need to move anything from reserves because we're changing the actual amount of, of the budget. That would all come before the board. And any items that we do that are, we're able to purchase under our threshold, we will bring back as a summary to you so you know that that's how we spent the money. So instead of coming to ask for approval, we'll just give a summary.
Somewhere I had the impression we were going up to 100,000.
I think that was for emergencies we got that. But on a day-to-day basis, it's 30.
So was the 100,000 in this or where, where did that show up in the minutes?
No, that was, I mean. That was, I'll tell, that, we asked that question and that's why I voted no. And there was no threshold. What the explanation we got from staff was, if it's a line item and it was budgeted for it, they have the sole discretion to move it. They will let us know once they do it, but they have the sole discretion of moving it.
Because like, like, for example, a lot of the stuff in the enterprise fund, Kenny's items are well over the $30,000 threshold, but you've approved him to spend the money on the lift stations. So those purchases, if he has to buy a Thompson pump, it's going to be more than $30,000, so.
And in the past, he would come here and advocate for that and when we moved on.
We actually hadn't. So this is just ratifying the way that it's gone. Because those dollars were approved on those line items, he was spending them. If it's a contract, it's always come before you.
So we're authorizing the approval of expenditures of budgeted items?
Yes.
But I.
We're, this is the way that we've been doing it all along. It's just never been written down.
But I, but I thought the limit was up to 30,000, but if exceeded that, then it would come back before us. Is that what I'm hearing right now or not?
That's what we eliminated, I believe.
Yes, so I will tell you this, maybe we weren't doing consistent, but I remember us doing it, approving items either from you or Chelsea, like, you know, I need you guys to approve this, you know, it's a, we need to do it.
Higher ticket items.
We did in the general fund, yeah. We do it, maybe not do it consistent. My only concern within this, I'm okay with, if it's a line item, but then what goes into that particular allied item is what you guys are moving. And that's what I wanted us, that was my concern. And that's why I voted no.
And that was what I, we will do the summary for you that this is, here's the line item, it's $100,000. We bought the, we bought this, 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 this.
Which then gives us no. So me, I'll give you one example. So under landscaping, you will have one line item for tree replacement, one line item for saw replacement. It's up to you, if you decide that you're not going to go ahead and plant and replace any other trees and you're going to use that money totally to replace the sod and the sod per feud, you're just going to come after the fact and tell us.
No, because we'd be transferring it from a different line. No, so if, we wouldn't, we wouldn't take the money from the tree line to move it to the sod line without your approval.
We couldn't do that.
Because that money wasn't approved for sod, it was approved for trees.
So the line, not the, the general title of the line item you're saying, so individually you wouldn't do that neither?
It would, yeah, if we were going to, yeah. So we wouldn't cross lines without your approval if it was. If we move anything, it will come before you. Historically, that has always happened in the general fund. But on the enterprise fund side, because their purchases are so high, we've just purchased according to, I mean, their budget lines are well over $30,000. A lot of the stuff in the general fund is not. And if it is, it's a purchase we already know is going to be large and it's going to need a contract. And so it would come before you anyway.
So it's contract-like items?
Yeah.
That's what we're approving. We're not taking sod and going to trees or vice versa.
Correct, correct. Not, no, not budget line item moves, you're not.
Yeah, I was trying to wrap my head around the emergency conditions. I didn't know, we meet twice a month. I mean, we meet quite frequently.
Right.
So I'm not quite sure, unless, you know, a sore line broke, you know, in the middle of the night, that, obviously, everybody understands that. But if it's that, if that's what's emergency and just not routine business, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, it would.
But I want a clarification because when I read this, it wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, we won't make moves, because when you approve the budget, you approve those dollar amounts for those line items. So we're just, in the past, historically, we have just purchased against those line items for expenses appropriate for those line items in order to just keep our business going a day-to-day without having to have delays to come before the board. So it's never been formalized or written down or ratified, and that's what we're asking you to do. It's just allow us to formally do what we've been doing all along, but now it's actually written down.
So then you have no changes, right?
No, no, no.
Okay, so then I'll need a motion to approve the minutes?
Also move, second.
So we have a motion by Bob, a second by Ed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items? Anything that needs to be pulled? No.
Tony just wants to make note of one change.
Yeah, this is resolution 2023-19. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
We circulated it for review by our public finance team. And if I can pass this around, this is our proposed red line changes from Pedro Hernandez, who's bond counsel. And those are, changed language in the title. And they just sort of rearranged the body of the document. And they're fine and acceptable. And should Chelsea or Laura, you have the clean version of that resolution?
Yes, it's printed for signature.
So that item, very quick, transfers monies out of the enterprise fund, out of the general fund capital projects budget and the Pelican Reserve capital projects budget at certain amounts. That's what timely was added to what the ones in your book.
So this one you just passed out supersedes the one that's on the screen?
Yes.
Yes, because what it does, again, it changes the form, the title format a touch. And it just rearranges the order of the other funds. And when you get down to the bottom, the text is the same.
Okay, I see.
The contents are the same. When you get to one, two, and three, it's just the. And then we're requesting that the board, as part of this, approve the revised resolution 2023-19 that you had the red line version. Do you guys get your copies?
So how are we referring to this 2023-19 as revised?
Yes.
Yes. Do these more copies to go down or everybody give them?
I think everybody got them. Everybody got those?
I will move on.
I have three copies.
I will move on consent agenda items A and B, with B being the revised resolution 2023-19.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Second, motion by Carol, second by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like, Chelsea, once, now that we have a contract on Avila and because this is the first road in Pelican Preserve that's going to be resurfaced and redone, is it possible to kind of keep track of this separately somehow so that when we get all done, we'll know exactly? I'm like, in addition to the contract, there were engineering expenses for doing the borings. There were staff time, I'm sure. So hard costs and soft costs. And the, I don't know what standard in the industry, if it's lineal feet or miles or what, so that we can get an idea how much replacing the roads are going to be per, I don't know, lineal foot or per mile or whatever. All costs, hard and soft. So staff time, you know, that sort of thing. I saw that Tetra Tech is going to be doing the onsite management. So there'll be costs from Tetra Tech that'll be involved in it. So when we get all done, I'd like to have a complete picture of how much this costs.
So you're trying to get a unit price schedule of all of the line items that make up the project?
Based on real, real data.
Yeah.
I don't want projections or anything like that, exactly how much.
Tetra Tech can give you square yards, square feet, inches, miles, whatever.
The short answer is yes. Staff, for the hard cost, staff time will have to be estimated. But yes, we can do that.
Good, thank you. I just thought if you started now putting the numbers together, then as they come up, you know, there's.
And now that our communities are all 20 years old, there's going to be more and more of this as we move forward.
Yes.
And I know that at least from P-PAC, the early estimates of what it was going to cost didn't even come close to what it really cost. So we need to really get a good ballpark number.
Well, just like you saw on that road at the beginning of the meeting, you're going out there, the first thing you got to do is you got to walk that road right-of-way to right-of-way because curbs and gutters, you go out there and do curbs and gutters or do paving without the curbs and the gutters, not smart. Not smart at all. So have a unit price for removing curbs and gutters, replacing curbs and gutters, milling pavement, putting down pavement. I mean, you could have.
To Carol's point, you know, we, we got pretty far down the line with just the road. When we really, it should have been brought up that we needed to do the gutters too. So this way we have a punch list of the things that we're going to consider.
I mean, when it first came up, people were talking about, oh, maybe $80,000, $80,000, $90,000.
That was the high end, right.
And that's what was kind of put in the budget for it. Well, now we know that it's 124,000 and probably 40-some-odd thousand in engineering for the borings.
Exactly.
And Tetra Tech to watch over everything is going to be a certain amount. And the staff time, you know, to do it and whatever, all that should be taken into account. So we can get a per something, it's going to cost us so much per.
Yeah, we'll do it.
So you get.
And then when you use that to estimate your next job, you'll be off. You'll be off.
At 20%.
Oh, yeah.
Never fails.
Yes, we will, we will track it and report, we'll report it back in the public works monthly report once the project's done.
Thank you.
Good idea to have that information.
All right, so we'll go ahead with district engineer.
Yep, Steven's here.
We haven't seen him for so long, I didn't know what he looked like.
Good afternoon, supervisor. Steven Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. I have our task authorization update for you.
Put your glasses on.
Get your readers on. You can just.
Good lord.
You can zoom in more than we can just, oh, scroll down as we go. Okay, irrigation meter replacement. We're working with staff right now. We have materials, we have a contractor. That project is moving forward.
That project, we anticipate to take place in the summer because we will have to take down the irrigation system for probably two days, but we will give ample notice to the community.
Do it on a rainy day.
That's the plan.
Irrigation pump station generator. This is going to go out to bid on the 20th. Lower Hawthorne well, PW number seven. We will receive and review bids on the 6th of March and bring them for board approval on the 16th of March. Irrigation and force main improvements. We received comments from staff on a 30% submittal. We're working on 60% submittal. Next items are to work with Lee County on the redundant parallel force main alignment, get their comments and input, and continue to work with FPNL on the consent agreement. Flowway weir adjustments. We have a contractor, VNH Construction. The NTP should be issued on the 20th of this month. And construction will begin on weirs two and three first. Griffin utility relocation. There was a pre-con meeting today?
Yes.
Chelsea, you were there?
Yep.
Okay.
They anticipate starting construction in April.
Everyone is looking forward to that.
I have a question for you, I guess. Are they going to be looking for us for feedback on how to either close it, like how they did by Sossi? Close it one side totally to speed up the process or just going to keep one lane open?
The contractor, the contractor has to provide their MOT plan. We had to do some due diligence with regards to our utilities because they planned on doing utilities first. So we gave them feedback for operation of our utilities. Let's just leave that. And as soon as they submit their MOT, ultimately, the county has the approval of the MOT. We have, we can provide comments, but we're going to wait to see what they propose.
Do you recall what, like, was it like halfway through the project, right, that they came and asked us to, it was in the beginning? I remember, I, my memory serves me right. Halfway through the project, they came and said, look, we can expedite it if we close it all, right?
It's, it's the same contractor from the last company. It's the same subs from the last company. Denko is the one doing the utilities. As soon as we find out what their plan is.
This one's going to be a little bit more difficult.
We'll, we'll let you know. We'll, we'll let you know.
Yeah.
So I can't, I can't say because we haven't really seen their final proposed MOT plan.
All right, thank you.
Irrator FPL assistance, we provided a figure to staff last week, which shows the current easements that the district owns to get to the lakes. And we showed the location of existing transformers. Staff is working with a vendor on sizing and locating pumps to the nearest easement that is located nearest to a transformer. Once we get that finalized, we'll be able to finalize figures that can be used for an electrical contractor to install the electrical services. Phase two year two lake bank restoration, they're wrapping up lakes 85 and 88 right now in Silver Lakes. 88 is pretty much complete, they have to do some sodding. Lakes 85, on Lake 85, they are installing materials still. There's been some issue getting stone, but the contractor's working on getting around that right now. He found another quarry that can produce the number four stone that we need. They've provided an updated schedule. They're planning to complete all the projects before the rainy season. So we're working with them and holding them to that. Villa Circle resurfacing, we just approved the contract to Ajax. PP Road inspections, Carol, this goes into kind of what you were talking about earlier. On the 7th, we're going to be going out to Pelican Preserve and doing an investigation or inspection of all the roads in Pelican Preserve. And we'll provide an inventory and an assessment of the condition of all the roads. And in addition to that, we'll provide a cost estimate and kind of a schedule of when to anticipate you should be making the repairs. So in that will include costs for, you know, soft costs as well.
And will you be ranking them then?
Yeah, yep. So part of the assessment will say, hey, this is number one priority. You've got to get this done in the next two years or five years, whatever, whatever it may be.
Are they also going to be considering segments of the road? Like our biggest problem in most of the residential communities are the cul-de-sacs. The turnaround areas. So we don't necessarily need to redo the whole road, but we certainly need to attend to those areas. Is that part of how you're skoping out this?
If they look at it and they say, hey, listen, this, the main part of the road has 10 years left, but this portion it could go for a repair and then do all of it at once then that would be.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
They're going to look at it at a granular level, they're going to go inch by inch on it.
Yeah, because a lot of communities complain, we're only complaining about certain areas, we're not complaining about the main streets thoroughly.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Gateway Storage Building, we received comments from staff, we're incorporating those into our plans. That is moving forward. Gateway Admin Building was brought up at the last meeting. We're moving to 60% design, which will be delivered at the end of this month. SRF Lake Bank Restoration Facilities Plan, we have a public hearing in 31 minutes. So we'll talk more about that. Phase three, the fiscal year 24 lake bank restoration. Our surveyors are onsite this week collecting data. That's for the six first lakes that are in the facilities plan to be reconstructed.
Just touch on that real quick with regards to timing, if you would.
Yeah, okay, so for timing, right now we're doing the surveying. We'll get the surveying back within two weeks, we'll move through design. We'll, we'll look at the surveying and go out in the field, the staff determine where and to what extent we want the restoration to be. We'll finalize all of our design documents prior to July, which is when it'll have to be submitted to SRF for the August hearing. So it kind of ties back into the facilities plan. So facilities plan, we have public hearing. Once the board makes a resolution to adopt the facilities plan, that will get submitted to SRF. That will get reviewed in the state clearinghouse for two to five months, hopefully on the lower end of that. Once that's approved, then we'll send in, submit an RFI for construction dollars, which will be in August. We'll, we'll go after construction.
We can't get the construction dollars for next fiscal years lakes until the facilities plan is approved. That's imperative.
And our best chance for getting the funds is to get it in the August one.
That's when the dollars.
When are we going to be letting all of the people who are impacted by the easement to the lake issues? Because that will certainly be a very hot issue.
When will we let them know?
When will we have a map that's going to a set of plans that will show the plan view of where all of the aerators are going? Where the blowers are going, where everything is going? Because we're going to be going down select.
You're talking about the aerator project at this point, right?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so Keith, I don't know if you want to take this. I mean, we're, so right now we've identified easement locations and the transformers that are closest to easement locations. So we kind of have a rough idea of which easements we're going to be going down.
Have you cleared FPL's consent to use that transformer?
Is there available power?
Yes, so we've spoken to them and they said for the most part, all of them have 60 amp services available to them. This is a lot of going back and forth with them.
Who'd you talk to?
We've probably talked to like 12 people at FPNL at this point.
Truthfully.
It took, we had to pull teeth to get, to get.
One house built on a vacant lot and the transformer wasn't big enough to take it.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
You talked to the wrong person.
I don't care. Okay, yeah, well somehow we just need, we got a lot of people that are going to be impacted by this, the need to know, hey, we're going to be going up. Where you right now have landscaping this, that, and the other, we're going to tear all this up to get back out to the lake.
Certainly, I mean, even along the roadway, we're going to be installing conduit for power, so.
As, as soon as we firm up final locations, we'll be notifying with ample notice so they can remove their, their shrubbery, vegetation, et cetera. Plantings, pots before we come in.
We'll try to do trenchless installation of the conduit as.
Well, you're probably directional bored most of that.
As practical as possible, that's what we'll be doing. Timber Creek sheet flow analysis, we sent in a scope for Chelsea's review. Development updates, Arborwood Phase Three, we're like inches away from approving the utilities for turnover. Stormwater, there's still a couple of items they have to work on. North Haven Community, the developer needs to provide bonds. And once they have those, we can bring that to the board and recommend, for your recommendation to approve the permit.
Do we have plans, approvable plans right now?
Yeah.
Permitable plans?
Yes.
We do have?
Yep, everything, all the comments have been satisfied. The only thing we're waiting on is a bond for the improvements.
They agreed to the aeration that the board opined on a couple of months back.
Gateway Charter High School, we're reviewing the first submittal, there's some easements that need to get cleaned up. So we're kind of waiting on, on that. Daniels Preserve Apartments, this is off of Daniels Parkway, east of Daniels Preserve. It's not Daniels Preserve Apartments, I'm sorry, it's Daniels Parkway Apartments. We are helping them right now locate a potential source for reuse water. Originally they wanted to use surface wells and the board said, no, that's not an option. So we're working with them right now to locate where they can get reuse water. And Santa Luz, there's been a couple of issues out there with the contractor. They've not been a very clean contractor, so we've had a couple, been a lot of stormwater issues out there. So we're trying to stay on top of them as much as possible and they've got some non-compliance letters from Lee County as well.
Who, who's preparing plans for them to rebuild the lake banks on those two or three buildings?
Grady Minor is the engineer.
Okay. And then they're going to develop a set of plans to return to the 20-foot LME?
Yes.
And then who's going to build it?
Their contractor, I don't know who their actual.
Developers.
Yeah, the developer is Lord Nar.
Okay, and has anybody been in, associated with this on checking the storm sewer system in that community? Because it's a joke.
Yeah, it hasn't been videoed, it will request it to be videoed before they're done.
And then the last thing, all of the LME on the Santa Luz side that we deferred doing the lake bank modifications, improvements? Will we do those immediately after they're done and turn it over?
I don't think we'll need to, I mean, when, when they reap, because the way that that development was constructed, it appears that the land was put in the wrong spot according to the plat. So they have to have, I think, like 20 feet from the buildings to the water line at control and that's not there right now. So they have to build out that slope, so.
So they have to create the 4 to 1 or 6 to 1, whatever.
They pretty much have to build what we want, so we should be good once they're done.
Any other questions for Steven?
Nope.
All right, thank you, talk to you soon.
Can you, if you want to ask a question, I'd like to stand up and speak on the podium.
Marty Manten, Phil Monticello, when you assess the roads in Pelican Preserve, are you going to do the culverts, the drainage?
We'll do the, I'm sorry, valley gathers.
The valley gathers.
Yeah, not the actual storm.
Thank you.
Admin, agenda items, let's see, you can, right?
So hot off the press, last week, last week, la, oh, sorry, wrong thing. Capital Reserve Study, the board, when we started to look at doing a general fund capital reserve study inquired about an enterprise capital reserve study. Typically you do those as part of your rate study. But anyhow, we reached out to Raftellus to do a capital reserve study. And this is their proposal that they provided. So I brought this in front of you, if you wish to do this now or if you wish to wait until the rate study in a couple of years.
I'll open up. Bobby, have any?
I've got a lot of questions on it, but like particularly how they were forecasting monies for future assessments.
Different, different ones.
It's a different one, it's not this?
No, this is just a proposal to do a capital reserve study for the enterprise fund only.
Okay, then I guess I don't have anything yet.
So this basically will tell us if we're charging enough for this, for the water and stuff that goes through just this fund.
Long-term needs replacement.
Yes. So what we would do is we would provide a list of anticipated projects in the next, whatever threshold, if it's 10, 20, 30 years. And we would provide a list of projects that we anticipate to be on the horizon. And they would evaluate our existing fee structure in comparison with those proposed capital projects and to assess if we have enough capital reserve. Like I said, typically that's done with a rate study because if you don't have enough money, you have to adjust the fees. And so you're going to want to know what that fee is next, so. But this, this could be a standalone project at, at the price you see here. There was a grammatical error on there, Tony caught, they referred to us as a city, we had them correct it to district. But if you wish to do this now, we can get it underway or we can wait a couple of years. I think we're on year two or.
We'll have to do around two of three.
Yeah.
So we'll be doing the rate study soon, so we could incorporate it into that.
We already know we're short. We know we're short right now, so delaying this is just going to make it worse and have a much larger fee when we go to implement it two years, three years from now. So my deal is we ought to do it immediately.
So the total cost of the 39,000?
Yes, ma'am.
And the, the added value here is also not just knowing, you know, what, what's going to cost, how we could potentially fund it. But in my opinion, it's also validation of the work that we've done over the past three to five years on what we think we need to be addressing. And part of our, our capital projects and bond validation that we've recently done is based on staff and our consultants' opinion on what is critical. So this again gives us a, another independent, third, third-party unbiased opinion of what, what we, what we need to identify and what we need to address down the road. And I think it, it complements what we're doing today because I think most residents want to understand, what are we addressing today? What, what do they need to be aware of in the next five, 10, 15 years, depending on, on how we do it? Because I think we're at a point now where our community is about 30 some years old. And if you look at infrastructure, this is about time that things start breaking and you need to, it's not just a break fix. In some cases, it's, it's an all-out infrastructure replacement. So I think it's just the right thing to do and I think we'll, we'll lose more money if, by not doing it than I think by, by going ahead and pushing forward with it.
So this, just so you guys know that this is unbudgeted funds for this year, so you will have to transfer some money.
And, and just a recommendation, recommendation on where we would pull this, reserves or?
We'll start from reserves and then that's enterprise fund.
Okay. Yep, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doug, a second by Ed, on favor say aye.
Aye.
The money from the reserves, yes.
All right, thank you. We'll notify Raftellus and get it underway. Hopefully we'll have a utilities director by the end of the report or beginning, we'll see. Okay, item B, I'll turn this next item over to Keith and I know Margaret's here, Kathy's here as well. But Keith, if you want to kind of give an intro.
Good afternoon, Keith Riddle, Public Works Director. So this item dates back almost a year now. It is for the pilot median landscaping for Gateway Boulevard from State Road 82 to about 2,000 feet to the south. This is near the Stony Brook community. Staff has brought a few different options to the board over the past year. Some were not financially feasible, some just weren't desirable. So during the last time this was on the agenda, the board requested that a work group was put together with some folks from the Stony Brook community. And that has taken place. And the attached plan, that is part of the agenda package, is what the work group has developed as the concept. And if Margaret or Kathy, you guys want to come up if there's any questions specifically to the plan?
I should real quick, like.
Sure.
I've lost 2,000 feet, that's almost half a mile.
That's about, that's the length of that?
I thought, I thought that median went from 82 just down to the end of the light standards.
It's about 2,000 feet.
That's 2,000 feet, half a mile?
A little less, yep. Yep. So the plan, yeah, that's the aerial of the, that's the aerial of the, that's the aerial of the median location there. Yeah, there's State Road 82 and then, can't see though, glasses. So that's the area and then also attached to the agenda is the concept plan with what plantings are recommended. They have recommended for ground cover four different choices, which is also part of the submittal. Do you have any specific questions? Did you have opportunity to take a look at it?
I have some questions, but I'll wait to see if anybody else has questions.
Are they asking us to choose on their alternates, one, two, three, and four? Or are they going to suggest something or what?
They, yes, they have suggested four choices for ground cover and then the others were not options, they were just suggestions. So what we're looking for today is a motion to approve the concept and then staff will get prices. We didn't, ah, yes, sir.
I just have a question, so the peanut grass is here, is that what we had before or is it different?
Margaret Feinberg, Stony Brook at Gateway, the biggest thing is the bed prep. If whatever we put out there is going to fail unless the proper preparation is done, irrigation needs to be put back. And then the soil needs to be prepped for whatever goes in. And I think that was the failure of the peanut before was because there was not adequate bed prep done.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but the peanut grass actually thrived and it looked decent. Where, where there became issues is there was so much weeds growing through it that it just really just killed the, the overall aesthetics of, of, you know. So I just want to be clear, the peanut grass was, is aesthetically pleasing. It will survive in that area if you have the right underlayment and the, all that stuff. So we're, and you know, we're happy with that grass as an alternative, just the prep needs to change.
What does that require, removing lime rock from the road construction and hauling in topsoil? That's a lot of topsoil.
It requires some, some heavy excavation with a, with a small backhoe to remove all that.
How deep are we going down below the curb?
I would say a foot.
Okay.
Would be safe to get a good bed in there and topsoil.
A foot for 2,000 feet?
It's, it said lime rock when they built the road, they just carried the lime rock straight hammered in it, so it's.
How far is the lime rock down?
It's, well, it varies.
Well, I guess how, how, how deep is the soil base?
The soil base now?
Yeah.
It's very shallow.
It's very, it's from an inch to five inches.
Well, I mean, there's.
When they built the road, they didn't worry about that.
I mean, there's some areas that is like literally like at the end of it, it's about an inch to two inches.
That lime rock could easily go down 24 inches.
I don't think we want to take it all out though, it's not necessary.
No.
The, the, the removing of the soil will be no different than what we did in Griffin in 82 because we, we did the same thing there with, on that medium. So it's, I mean, much smaller, but.
How are they going to build this with that road and operation? They going to shut down the road?
Yes, they would have to shut down one side at a time and route traffic through the median openings.
Duration?
Duration to do the work.
For, for, for shutting the road down?
Oh, probably a week. During the daytime hours.
When's that?
Cross your fingers here.
When's that now?
So, so there's nothing budgeted for this right now. So you're asking us to approve your general concept plan.
Let me clarify that there is some budget money for overall, not for this particular location, so we'll go into that. I just.
Did you guys explain the history behind this of how we got, got to where we are today? Did anybody do that?
Couldn't make a decision.
Well, how it started, it was brought up to the board and our staff, the mainscape was concerned with the safety of this, of the employees that were servicing the road because of the, specifically the cocoa plant at that time, when they do, have to do the hedge, the cars are coming in super fast and it was a safety concern. So they wanted it to try to remove that and add something that would be, take less maintenance and it wouldn't, you know, put in the, the staff there as a liability.
So then what hap, then staff came up with some ideas?
So then staff came out with, I think, three different sets of ideas and, and really none of them were feasible. I, I don't, you know, the, the two that I, the two, the two that I recall, the price of, yeah. And then, and it, and really honestly, it honestly didn't also, I don't feel like it matched the look of gateway, it would be a standalone area, right? And that is the only concern I have with some of the choices here because it is a gateway asset. And I would like for us to keep it a uniform regarding, and then also the creeping time, because I did a lot of research on that particular plant. And that plant does not, it's not used in Lee County. And when you actually look at it, it kind of does look like a weed. It's not this beautiful pink flower that you see it, that is up north Florida.
But so we, just to kind of get the public back up to speed. So the, the ideas and there were some concerns from the, the community and the residents of Stony Brook that this is their, their front entrance. They, they would like some say into what goes there. The board directed staff to work with a handful of residents, volunteers, thank you, to come up with this option. And so we've worked together collectively, mainly Margaret and Kathy over the last month or two and have come up with this idea, some input from, from staff or at least oversight. And so the, the median has sat pretty bare, as most of you have seen for quite a few months now. So ultimately we want to, with whatever is determined, bring this back to gateway standards. And so this is what has been proposed of, of the, the couple of volunteers that we have within Stony Brook.
And let me just make one more final statement. Had this been done correctly the first time, we would not be here today.
Agreed.
That's true, that's.
So that's why oversight and due diligence is very important.
But who, who did that the first go around? Was it, who did the? The, the development as part because of road shavings?
I don't think.
No, because that was redone back in, when we moved the palms and so mainscape did it. I don't know if it was funded through the county, I believe we had to pay for it.
Okay.
It's part of the, part of the agreement with the roads, so we let it.
Got it.
Previous.
When the, when the palms got moved, then the beds were bare. There was nothing really out there. So then it became a rush to get something out there because it was just dirt in the median or lime rock, I guess.
What's, what's the estimated cost based on this, a concept of the, the whole package, ballpark?
Well, we're not there yet. I, I didn't want to spend a lot of time receiving quotes and plus the concept was approved. But if I had to do a ballpark, I would say 200.
Thousand? Yes.
Yes.
Which then we'll, we'll take all our budget plus some.
The excavation, the excavation and the soil replenishment is, is going to be very costly because of the amount of tea involved.
And you still have to put the irrigation back in the future now.
I just don't, yeah, you don't go by wayside when you do that.
There's not a simpler solution for that.
So I, I, I know I was able to speak with Margaret a few times on this issue. So I'm going to start with the center median that's closest to eighty-two, what we have all the royals. So when you go look at that, there is, are, are you guys planning on shaving the roots and doing anything there? Because I did, I did see that you want to plant vermeliacs.
If it was feasible.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not sure what the root system there in that median is, but hopefully something like a vermeliad would work there. Doesn't require much space.
Are those palms coming out?
So the thing, no. So the thing what I'm concerned is the type of, of root system that the royals or mainly any palm, it's very dense. So you would have to do a lot of shaving of those areas. And in that particular centimeter, it's above the curving by six, some ten inches. So you're looking a lot of digging. To me, that is the entrance of Gateway. So if we had to do anything there, I would have proposed that we do the annuals. So from the beginning of the curving on eighty-two to the first palm tree, spend the money there. Go down and then do the annuals. They would have matched all the other annuals where you have vermeliacs, right? Because you're going to end up being replaced.
But keep the palms.
Yes. Don't change anything there besides, uh, there, on my eyes would be just take care of and make it annuals. Make it match the entrance of Gateway and the annuals and everywhere else, whatever in is in design. It's in a smaller area, but that's what we do there. At the end of it, where you have annuals, which is the entrance of the Stony Brook, that concerns me and I'll tell you historically. The last time that we installed the annuals there, within three days, the annuals were destroyed because of the trucks turning it in. It was replaced. Within three weeks, there were damage again. As of right now, you have no annuals for over a month for the same reason. So I think it will continue to be a hard area and I don't want you guys not to have the annuals because it wouldn't be only on mainscape. They're going to just continue to run it over. So that area is something, a little bit more hardy though.
Paint the concrete.
Or something over there. But you know, you know exactly the area I'm talking, and that's what all the irrigation breaks. So that's my concern. It is just a bad design on, on that. I would have tried to save some money and keep the cocoa plums and try to get them narrow. That would have been me. The exoras, I know you guys like it for color, but I did a, a lot of research. Exoras are also not good because they're extremely sensitive to the pH in the soil in Florida and the limestone makes it bad. So if you look at it now, you barely see any of the flowers. So I definitely think we should do something, but definitely remove those exoras. They're in really bad shape. They kept damaging banged up.
So.
Yes. And I, that's what I would agree to. I would have just, instead of having to shave the entire area where the royals are, because that's going to cost a lot. I would do it just in the beginning to, so you can have the annuals, keep everything else the same. And at the other end, which is closest to their entrance, find a solution or something that it may be even a little bit taller that wouldn't be run over by the trucks or there'll be less light to be damaged. So that's my only feedback within this.
And we had known that in, to do the proper bed prep, that all of the exoras would have to come out.
Yeah.
But we need something that's high enough because of lights. But going back to where you want to put, um, the annuals at the front, um, that was a suggestion I made years ago. But I guess they couldn't, they couldn't grow there. Elle said there was a problem with them, the annuals growing there. And that's why.
Because of the, because historically what they did is they just tried to dig a hole between the roots. You need to do it the right way, which is completely, I don't know exactly what the process is, but it's completely removing it enough. They won't damage the royals, which I don't think it will. And then just focus on the, and that will be your entrance of Gateway area. I mean, I did see the plantings of the crepe murals, which there was a lot. You could add that where you remove some of the exoras because right now they look like sticks, but they look beautiful with pink and they will bloom. And that will match. You have them by the pool. You have them in different locations. So you get that for color as well. That could be an option.
But the exora wasn't really for color. It was more for height because of the lights, because.
The headlights.
Yeah, the headlights coming from the cars. Yeah, that's, that's a, we need that bumper there because of the headlights.
So what was it you're suggesting to put back and once you remove those exoras for height? That I missed. I thought, I thought on my maps you're keeping it.
I thought we were going to put exoras back in.
Are those dwarf or are they regular?
They're dwarf.
Because Freddie says exoras, pardon Freddie, they're really nothing to take care of. They're really, they were. We were also looking for very low maintenance, like things that would, wouldn't really require people being out in the median very much.
I think the, the bigger question is, not what we're going to put in, is what's the budget we're willing to spend on that area? That's, if we understand what we're willing to spend, then we can back into the design.
So that's what I was trying to think, like the first one.
We're spinning on wheels, talking about what kind of plants to put in, when we should be talking about how much are we willing to invest in this? And have we talked to the county? Is there any plans to do anything on that road in the future? That could, I mean, I'm just speaking off.
I can answer that one real quick, Mike.
Yeah.
No way.
I'm just saying, you know.
I think you need to think about it as not, although Stony Brook is the closest to that entrance. It's the entrance into Gateway off of.
I mean, it needs to look nice. I'm not, I'm not downplaying that. I'm just saying it just.
It should be appealing. And we gave four choices, actually for, not for color, mostly for price, to see which one would be more economically feasible.
Well, I think our contract, it doesn't, unless there is a specialty plant, it's all the same price. It's just go by the size.
I, I think what I'd want to get, what I want to get a quote on is like separate these two out, separate it out. The, the planning is phase two. Phase one is removal and, and preparation. That's where your cost is going to come in. So if we can get some scope and pricing around that and see if there's a way that we can do this, you know. Can we, you know, do we have to farm it out? Is it something that, you know, we can, we can do internally? I don't know. I mean, we've got some equipment. Like, how can we, how can we reduce this from just your spitballing of two hundred K? How do we get it down to a manageable number?
Has anybody talked to the county as to when this road might go four lanes?
That's what I was talking about. Because we do all this and they come through and tear the median up altogether.
Because if they go in to make this, because that's only a hundred and twenty feet wide and to go to four lanes right there, that, that's going to be pavement wall to wall.
We can't even get a sidewalk on Griffin. I don't know when they plan on doing. We can, we can.
I just think it would be nice to have that so that somebody comes back after we tear them out and they're building the new road. We can say they lied to us.
Yeah.
Uh, but at this point in time, we say, well, we never thought of checking with them. Let's find out what's your schedule for widening of eighty-two, or I'm sorry, of, uh, Gateway Boulevard from there to, let's say, the FPL Eastman.
And here's what I would, I would tee it up and say, we're, we're getting ready to make a potentially significant investment in that median.
Yeah.
To fix these problems. Before we do that, we're trying to do some due diligence. Is there, are there any plans or is there?
We can do that, but instead of delaying this even further, if we could get some direction from the board.
No, no, not stop. Just get the answer to it so that we aren't surprised that, hey, we got this on the books in three years.
I can tell you, I've looked at the county CIP for the next ten years and it's not listed on there.
What is, what is our current budget right now? And I know we, we planted some of the.
I thought that original estimate was little over two hundred thousand. That's why we.
I mean, to me, this is, this should partly be funded by some type of reserves because we've been talking about it for a while. We didn't necessarily budget this. I think this is one of those things that we need to do it right. We didn't budget for it. That's what we have reserves for. So we could accommodate partial funding or maybe even funding the whole thing.
Laura's working on pulling it up right now.
Through, through reserves. But I mean, my, I think we should, first thing is let's figure out what it's going to take to get to ground zero. And then what we put on top. I mean, we can do that relatively quick. Once we, once we clear it out, putting plants on, I mean, that's a very low, low level of effort. I mean, irrigation might be a little more heavier, but.
Now, shouldn't mainscape be giving us money back because they haven't been doing anything there?
Well, that's.
I just backing that suggestion if you're not.
You mean not, not incurring maintenance costs?
Right. So therefore.
They're still, they're still maintaining it.
It's, it's very little to maintain, but.
I'm guessing the level of effort is not the same.
Yeah. We have a plant replacement program budget of a hundred and thirty thousand of which we spent.
I thought that was felicent. That's why.
No, it's in the old one.
I'm fine with, I think that, I think the design is, I mean, it's very comparable to what we have today. I think it's, it would be fine. There's some details we need to iron out. But I would be willing to, whether we need a motion just to approve, moving forward with getting some estimates on, and I would split them. I would focus on just the first piece right now, um, which is what it would cost to get this to ground zero and prep for, for planning. And that would include irrigation in that. Because the planning is, you know, sod and planning, that's.
I do have a question. Why was irrigation removed out of there? Because I knew, I know.
If you draw out that lime rock.
If I remember, there was a lot of problems with where it just kept popping out and it was laying in the road half the time. Jim would probably have a better idea, but I.
Surely the main.
I know. I remember there were issues, but I thought it was supposed to be repaired, not removed.
I mean, the irrigation's still there.
That's what I'm saying.
We're just, it's just the tubing lines that were pulled.
Yeah, the drip lines.
I mean, the drip lines.
Yeah, the drip lines were removed because they were laying in the road half the time. So.
Yeah, that's very minimal.
Yeah, the, the irrigation itself is still there. Just the drip lines are taken out.
It's not like we have a whole infrastructure and we got to lay new pipes.
Correct.
Well, you will once you dig it up, but the, that's.
No, the drip lines are removed.
That's not where the cost is going to be. It's digging up, digging out and shaving or whatever.
I, I think you keep proceeding, but do the checks on some of these things that could come and bite us. Man, no, and then just see what the thing looks like on cost.
Do you have clear direction?
And then you would do it in phase like that said, let's get the first cost to just remove everything and prep it for whatever we'll plant.
Either, either way, the county is not going to let us shut that road down at least until after April, May. Well, the, the lane, the lane closures after Easter. So at a minimum.
Keep, 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 keep in mind what else is occurring up the road about a mile and a half while we're doing that.
Exactly.
We'll get these people trapped in here and they won't be able to get out.
I hope that once the roundabout starts, a lot of the cut through traffic is going to.
This might encourage it.
You don't want to go through Gateway Greens? You don't want to let them through Gateway Greens?
I know Kathy had one more thing. Just come to my phone. Or just move it.
This hearing has improved.
You asked why the drip lines were taken out. They did that because they planned to put shell there, the, the shells. So that's, that was the reasoning that they did it.
That makes sense.
Yeah. That was.
I, I think this looks a lot, a lot better start than we had.
Yeah.
A couple of months ago with that, that proposal.
All right. Thank you.
So you got a direction. Perfect. All right.
Just in time, four o'clock.
Four o'clock. Yes, Tony. I thought your hand go up.
I'm sorry?
I thought I saw your hand go up.
No, not at all.
Seeing things now.
Yeah, I think it's time to open the public hearing. A motion would be appropriate to open the public hearing on the consideration of the stormwater facilities plan from Clean Water State Fund. And thereafter, adoption or consideration on adoption.
Is your mic on?
Oops. Yeah, it is.
All right. So I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ed, a second by Bob. On favor, aye.
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 Thank you. Yes, you do. Yes. And so the district has contracted with Tetra Tech to provide, uh, this, uh, facilities plan as part of the requirements for the state revolving fund loan program. So I will turn it over to Stephen to present, uh, the stormwater facilities plan.
Good afternoon again. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. This is the public hearing for the stormwater facilities plan for lake bank restoration. Just as a background, um, since two thousand and fourteen, uh, twenty lakes have been repaired and completed. Between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fifteen, uh, six trial lakes were completed. In two thousand and thirteen, it was brought to district's attention from residents and from South Florida. Uh, some of the lakes were eroding severely, uh, some to the point where they needed to be, um, repaired immediately. From that point, we took the six lakes and we took various methods to repair them. And that ultimately led us down to the path to where we are today of repairing them the way we are with a, a mixture of Armor Max or just the non-woven Geo textile. From then, we did the phase one facilities plan in two thousand and sixteen, which covered si, seven lakes, which have been completed. And then in two thousand and nineteen, we did the phase two facilities plan, which included fifteen lakes. Seven of those lakes have completed and eight of those are in construction right now. Two, which we talked about earlier, which are in Silver Lakes, eighty-five and eighty-eight. This facilities plan will cover the thirty-three remaining lakes that Tetra Tech and staff and third-party vendors have analyzed and looked at and have determined that they'll need repairs in the future.
Stephen, I think you ought to maybe be politically correct on something when we're saying that lakes have been completed.
Okay.
They have been completed for the residential site.
That is correct. It's a good point. So.
We should not try to imply that these lakes have been, they are far from completed. The residential sites may be completed, but that's about it.
So at the time, the board at the time, uh, made the determination that we should only focus on the lake banks that are behind residential homes. So, uh, road frontage, commercial, anything else, golf course.
Of course.
Were not touched at all.
And, and that is consistent with the way that we're doing it.
So the thirty-three lakes that are included in the facilities plan are shown on this map. It's broken out into two sections because Gateway is very large and there's a lot of lakes. There's four in the north part and the other twenty-nine are in the south part of Gateway. And this is in table form. This is the thirty-three lakes. This shows the lake numbers, the perimeter of the lake and feet, the cost, estimated cost, um, estimated construction year and the severity of the lakes. And there's a total in the bottom right-hand table.
And Stephen, where did we get this list from?
This list has been developed with, uh, staff and Tetra Tech and third-party vendor to review the lakes, determine which ones are the most severe condition and to prioritize them. That prioritization list has come before the board several times in different iterations.
That was the priority done about four or five months ago.
Yes, and approved by the board.
Not, has not changed.
Has not changed. It did change from the first time we showed it to you, but since then, this is the current prioritization list. Uh, the six first lakes are the ones that we're surveying right now and will hopefully be asking for construction dollars at the August hearing from SRF. So what is SRF? The state revolving fund, which is what SRF stands for, is a program administered by the floor department of environmental protection. They get, uh, they get amount of money each year and they will evaluate projects and determine if they qualify for a state revolving fund, um, financing. Uh, what they do is they, they lend money out at a very low interest rate. It's, I think it's prime plus like a half percent or somewhere around there. Does that sound about right?
Sounds right.
It's a discount. It's cheaper than you would if you were to go to a bank.
Much cheaper.
And which is why Gateway is pursuing state revolving fund, uh, funding for these projects. So the process is we submit a request for inclusion, which has been done. We prepare this facilities plan, um, which we're presenting now. Part of that requirement is that we have a publicly advertised hearing, which this has been appropriately advertised. And we are now holding this, uh, hearing. At the end of this, we're going to ask the board to, uh, adopt the facilities plan. Uh, once that has been done, we'll submit this to FDP for their approval. And as I mentioned in my status update, um, once we submit it to them, it goes out to the state clearinghouse and it takes them two to five months to review. They've looked at this one many times and I know the reviewers, so this should be closer on the two-month side of things. Once it's approved, we have a facilities plan. We don't have money yet. That's just pretty much our license to fish. Danny put it, uh, so eloquently last meeting. Uh, this just says, hey, the work that's in here is approved by SRF. And if we want to ask for money for it, we're allowed to. We don't have to, but we can. So at that point, we would submit, um, another RFI for either design money or construction dollars. Because you guys have, um, allowed us to go out and design, uh, survey and design the six first lakes on Gateways, uh, out of their, out of your own budget. We're going to be asking for construction dollars in August, um, not design dollars. Around the same time, we're going to be asking for design dollars for the future lakes. Once we, we ask for the construction funds, we're going to have to, um, submit to FDP the plans, the specifications, their supplemental conditions. They'll approve that. While they're approving it, we can release it to bid and then, um, once we have. While they're approving it, we can release it to bid and then once we have our bids in and an approved contractor that is selected, we'll work with SRF to get a loan application and the loan will be secured. So as I mentioned, there's 33 lakes as part of this facilities plan. This facilities plan looked at lake bank restoration and laterals. And the reason why laterals are included is because there are many lakes that have DO requirements for laterals. And if you want to get financing from SRF, it has to be in the facilities plan. You want to do something and you wanted to get financed by the facilities or SRF, it has to be in the facilities plan. So that's why laterals are included. So part of the facilities plan is we have to look at three alternatives to our project.
Oh, Stephen, I just have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Not being familiar with the particulars of each pond here.
Yes.
Are some of the ones that are currently on the list, do they have a restriction for laterals for whatever reason?
Some of them have DO requirements for laterals and other ones don't have any requirement for laterals.
So anything that is silent is going to get laterals based on this program?
So the way we have proposed it is to do DO only required laterals. You guys can make a recommendation to change that, it's a very nominal cost.
If they don't have any or if they're silent, we're having no plans to do it.
Yeah.
Yet we all know that laterals help the health of the lake bank mitigate erosion.
Yes.
But you're saying we'd have to specifically do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a nominal cost, we'll talk about that.
Right, I know it's not a lot of money, but it's important to do it.
I know some of the residents do not like laterals at all and other ones are very big proponents of them. I myself like them, I'd rather look at laterals than nothing.
I think I'll just chime in on this on Bob, so I'll do chiming right after me. I think there were mainly two communities that really were opposed to the laterals. And in one of the community, which was Silver Lakes, which they're the, which they were working on now, it is silence. So I think the board opted to keep it that way. And I think some in Gateway Greens do have, I don't know, actually don't have any silence one right there.
Some ponds in Gateway Greens have laterals.
So that'll be another one, if any of the ponds in Gateway Greens are here, they'll probably be opposed to getting the laterals.
They're not opposed to spending the money.
I don't think anybody is taking the position that if it calls for laterals in the DO.
We'll do it.
Don't do it, nobody's doing that.
Yeah.
They're saying if it doesn't say it, don't do it.
Then don't put it on my house.
And I argue that, and my, my position has always been if the DO is silent, it means that there's no requirements, which therefore default, it would default back to our, our gateway standards. And if our gateway standards calls for laterals, then if the DO is silent, it would default to our standard. That's, that's the way I, that's my personal.
Say that somewhere. If it's, if the DO is silent, but the gateway standard is that we want laterals, then we put laterals.
That's, yeah, that's my personal.
I can, I agree with that.
Yeah.
What I'm getting at this made up is the right guy to do it. Why are we spending all this money, he's millions of dollars, to do something we know.
And not having a parallel.
Not as robust as it should be. You know, kind of what the pond done and then go with all the benefits that come from redoing the bank and put laterals in.
And I think in the past that it's been, well, that, that consideration wasn't discussed on the front end, so there would have been additional costs and additional maintenance down the road. So I'm like, well, we keep kind of delaying that piece, but.
But the cost is minimal, I mean, laterals, no laterals, it's a negligible cost compared to what we're going to spend to rebuild the lakes.
So on the lake bank, lake bank restoration side of things, the three alternatives were do nothing, which we know we cannot do. For one, South Florida issues non-compliances all the time for erosion. Recently, Tony and I saw a letter from South Florida that it referenced an eight-inch drop-off as non-compliant and they were forcing the developers to repair that. So we know we have to do something. Geo textile tube, that's another option that we looked at. This is essentially where they take a Geo textile fabric, it's a black porous fabric. They anchor it around the perimeter of the lake, they take a dredge, put it out in the lake, they dredge or suck the material off the bottom of the lake into there, into the bag. Solids stay in, water goes out, and now you're left with a tube full of solids. And there's different options you can do with that, you can leave it in the sock and put sod on top of it. And what will happen is when the water recedes, you'll have the face of that black bag exposed and you'll still have a drop-off. You can take the bag, let it dry out, split the bag open and grade it flat. Problem is, it fell into the lake once for a reason, it didn't like being there, so it's going to wash away again.
We did this on 105 and it was a total failure.
Yeah.
Yeah. So and if it's.
Have the tubes.
So when there's.
Soils are horrible.
When there's a larger drop-off, you will have to do two, two of the tubes. We'll take the first one and leave that down in as a foundation, do a second one on top of that, split that one open and then grade it. The Brooks, they do this, I don't know if you're familiar with the Brooks and Benita, Estero, I think it's in Estero, Three Oaks Parkway. They've been doing this method, it's, it's cheaper, it's not going to last as long. If you're looking just to get it done, meet compliance, that's an option, but you're going to have to do it again.
Heritage Palm has it around their golf course, around their community. And if you want to talk about something with aesthetics of none, that's it. It looks horrible. It, it looks like a snake that's weaving in and out, it's irregular. When you pump it up and you put it up, you can't make it, it's not like molding clay or putting.
Does whatever it wants to do.
It goes wherever it wants to go and it, there is no aesthetic whatsoever.
ARVS anchored reinforced vegetative system is what we have been doing on the various lakes and in different iterations. This one is more expensive, at $199 a linear foot, that's based on last year's prices, inflated 15%. Now, the numbers are based off of this higher dollar amount, but it should be noted that we have always value engineered it, you know, for the purposes of this, we have to, you know, make a guess pretty much that it's going to be worst-case scenario, so we have the budget there. But in reality, it's not going to be that extensive of a repair. Usually, we can get away with doing the other option, which is not having the Armor Max, but just having the non-woven Geo textile, but having the rock and the sod on top of that. And that option was $115 a linear foot last year.
I don't want to hold up the facility plan or anything, but before we do anything and take it to the next level, let's go back, we've had now three, four years under our belt.
Yeah.
Where we went into some of these communities and some of these ponds and we did this 50-50, 40-60 alternative. Where we put in the Geo textiles where we, or not the Geo textiles, the Armor Max, where we had severe conditions. And then we put in the other material in less severe. Does anybody go back and taken any pictures of a before and after of how the two have held up?
No.
I think we ought to do that before we go and do any more and see, is it working?
Yeah.
Is it working?
Sure.
We, we have some ponds with seven and eight years now, so it could be done.
Yeah, I, I have no idea, I haven't been to any of the ponds.
Is ARVS synonymous with Armor Max or a competing product?
There's ARVS, that's just a terminology, it's the same thing as, Armor Max is the brand.
Okay.
ARVS is the type of brand of material it is.
But it'd be a good idea if we could have staff go out to, let's say, three or four of those ponds where we did this and take some pictures before and after, well, we sort of, we know what the before looked like.
Yeah.
But take the pictures afterwards now of two, three years of them setting, because we, we know there's not been anything but mowing grass, see what they look like.
10-4, we'll, we can facilitate that.
The, the toilet slope and whether it's sloughing off or where it's, whether it's holding, and is the four to one or six to one slope holding.
Okay. On laterals, on the next sheet. Do nothing on the ones that have DO requirements, that's not an option because it's a DO requirement, we have to do that. Option two was to do all of the lakes to meet code requirements. This came out at about $100,000 to do that, to meet just code requirement. This isn't, you know, full-blown, like we're going to put as many laterals as we can fit on the lake, it's applying the Lee County standard.
It's 25%.
Yeah. So it, it's not a lot of laterals. And then the third option was just doing the DO required lakes, which is it's under $50,000. So again, it's a nominal cost, if you guys want to make a note and revise it to say, hey, we're going to do all the lakes, we have the option to do all the lakes, then we have that option.
Well, why don't you want to have that discussion?
Hey, regarding the laterals.
When should we have that discussion?
I think we should have, it's up to me to keep a direction now.
Yeah, that's fine, we can, we can do that or do it at the end of this when we take comments.
Do you want to get some general consensus from everyone, just?
And regarding.
Personally, I think we should do the laterals.
And we're just talking about the lateral part of consensus.
If it was me, I would, from this point moving forward, anytime we do lake bank restoration, I would do laterals at the minimum requirement, 25%.
Okay.
And that should be the standard moving forward. And then that way we can start to look at budgeting on maintenance and making sure that, because I think the real key is not making a decision on do the laterals, it's what happens two, three years down the road. It's do we maintain it to a certain percent, who's overseeing, you know, the, the growth outside, that's where the rubber hits the road, that's where people start getting upset.
Where the money comes.
But we already said that when we created the pond standards, because the pond standard is.
And I agree, but, but we have to be able to, you know, adhere to that standard and I think that's, in the past, it's been, that's been additional cost.
It always chokes when we get to this point.
Yeah.
Everybody knows the right thing, but we veer it to the last minute. And I agree with you 100%, Doug, the 25% minimum will grow on its own if you do nothing. You know, 25% is kind of a starter, but they take over and they will.
Certain species take over, for sure.
Well, I'm not sure which species we have, but you know, generally it's, in Pelican, the experience has been they will grow all over the place.
Yeah.
So my nickel is, yeah, I think we should record, if we're going to spend the money to redo the banks to make them better, I would like to have those laterals as required.
And I think part of that is where do you place those laterals? You know, you talk about 25%, where, where would they be placed and what is our methodology on where we put it and why? So, because you're going to put it in somebody's backyard or you're not, and someone's going to be happy and they're not. And so, but I think that our, our position is we just need to justify what we do and, and if you fall within that, if it's X amount of feet between and you fall there, then that's the way it is.
And historically, it's like hair plugs, you do it every eight, 10, 20 feet, whatever, and they're all going to grow together. Okay.
So next thing we had to do for the facilities plan was.
Is that a?
It's a yes for me.
Yes for me.
Yeah, yes.
25% on the ponds that are, have DO requirements.
I think we do 25%.
I'm totally opposed to that, you're going to have chaos in here if you want to do that, people. I'll have this community, we'll have this room full, the people over there in Gateway Greens are not going to put up with this, I'm telling you that right now.
You're not going to do it with us fixing it?
It's not in the development order. We have not shown a track record of taking care of these laterals whatsoever on operation and maintenance. They're going to point that out and they're going to stick it up your X-axis. Don't even go down that road, I'm telling you, don't go down that road.
Well, I think we take the position, I think we take the position on not what we've done in the past, what we have the ability to control today.
And what's the right thing to do?
We haven't done it, Doug.
Well, that's, well, that's, that's our job to make sure that's being done.
And their argument is it isn't going to happen.
Okay, so right now, Ed is a no and then I'll be a yes for it. I will say, I will, there will be two types of laterals that, that I believe there aren't upon standards that I would stay away from, which is if like, we'll go down that path when it comes to it.
Yeah.
But I did look, and I will just say this, the reason why I will be a yes for it is we really took understanding what silent meant, it does not mean it does not require, we went back and forth with the county and we got that. And second of all, looking at the report, going back, because I was able to go back, as of now, I think we only had one request to remove laterals for a fishing spot. So mainly the amount of requests that we thought was going to be a lot, it's very minimal. I think it can count on both hands, since we implemented the pond standards, the request that we received. And I think there was only one, if I recall, there was.
I do have another comment.
Well, I'm saying about since we implemented the pond standards, so back three years, you may have 10 in total.
Well, right now, you've got a facilities plan that we've not gone into the detail of showing, are we going to submit this facility plan with the position that we're taking that where we're doing residential shoreline regardless of DO requirement in, or a lateral requirement of DO, we're putting in 25%? So we're, we're, we're taking that position as the approval of submitting this to the state?
The current position is to do DO required only, like the lakes that are DO requirements for laterals. If you were to make a change and say, hey, we want all the lakes to have the option to have laterals to meet the land development code minimum, then that would be what you're stating.
Option, but not the decision at this time.
You don't have to, it would just be available to you to do that.
Let me ask Ed a question, and anybody else can jump in. So if we, if we make the determination that laterals are a good thing, and if we all agree to that, now, we, we could probably have some debate on how much degree of improvement it may have and is there a point of where there might be negative return, we can discuss that. But you're talking, so the ones that were this DO requirement, that's a, that's a no-brainer, right, it's in there and we do it. But if the DO is silent and our position is it's beneficial for longevity of the lakes to put laterals in and to start with the minimum, which is 25%. I want to make sure that I have, that I understand why someone.
Wait, wait, say that again, start with a minimum of 25%?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a minimum 25%, that is the county standard, 25%.
Yeah, well, that's the county standard of 25%.
It's not 50 and it's not 75.
Hold up, let me finish. But I want to make sure I understand where there would be pushback. Is it because if we don't keep it maintained, then it becomes overrun and then it's aesthetically not pleasing?
They don't want them at all, they don't want them at all on their residential property.
And that's because of what, the aesthetics?
Aesthetics, purely aesthetics.
So some of the lakes that have, that don't have a DO requirement, they may have a road area that you could put laterals, I don't have a good example in front of me.
Well, we've got a lot of lakes that have golf course on it that would be the perfect place to put the laterals.
Right, so I mean, we're not saying it has to be behind the residence unless that's what everyone wants.
Let's figure out where, where it might be beneficial to put these laterals. If you just put it on one side, that's only going to benefit one side, so.
Keep in mind here now, a lot of these ponds that we're talking about have extreme escarpment and they have extreme slope. So regardless of, put laterals over here on the side, because that's not the first thing you've got to do. The first thing you've got to do is bring in material and reshape the soil.
Right.
The issue is what are you putting on top? Are you going to put on the Armor Max, are you going to put in the lighter material or are you going to put in something less, maybe like cocoa matte and then put the laterals on that?
Well, and.
Our track record of doing that, I'm just telling you, I've been here a long time, has been piss poor.
Well, we've got to make sure we're using the right material.
Because the first time we get a rain, it washes it right out because the laterals haven't taken hold. That's the problem.
So you're saying that if you put, if you put laterals in, you have to make sure that you put it on, in the right environment, so it's stable. Because I would, I would say what you're saying, the areas that we're, that we're pairing have severe escarpment and, and erosion. So if it's been severe, it got severe for a reason. So we need to make sure we're doing everything in our power to make sure it doesn't happen again if we're spending this amount of money.
And one of the things within our power is by putting the laterals in that environment. They hope to stabilize that.
But Bob, just listen, that's 25%. 25%.
Ed, Ed, it's not a maximum. You keep saying the 25%.
25% is the suggested, if it was what you're saying it is, then the county standard would be 100%, not 25%.
We want 100%. That's truly what you want.
One, one, one second.
The county doesn't agree with that.
Let's go with this, Tony has something to say.
Just a thought, and then going back to the introduction by Stephen, I think Stephen said that if you want whatever you want, or whatever you want to provide the greatest flexibility to get in the future, needs to be in here. And I think he said you can indicate that laterals are an option and the board will
And I think he said you can indicate that latorals are an option and the board will make the decision down the road as to whether or not to put your latorals. And by virtue of having it as an option in here, then that dollar figure gets part of the calculus by the state. And that provides the maximum ability for the construction and design law. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's not a decision, because I understand you, I could be wrong. Today's not the decision point as to what lakes will get latorals. It's if we go all lakes with latorals, this is what it will cost. And we, and the board will, in the future, make a determination as to which ones get latorals. That can be in the plan.
Tony, how many times have we had this discussion and we're in a circle? It never goes beyond the discussion. So I guess the question is, does anybody think latorals harm a pond? Do they do any damage to a pond?
No, I don't think that.
They only purify the water.
Depends on what you call.
They provide habitat for fish and for wildlife, for birds and stuff. And they, you know, they clean the water. They, there's nothing negative about it. They prevent erosion and washout. So I can't understand why we wouldn't want to do that.
You're talking to your people over in here. I'm talking Gateway.
I'm not talking.
People in Gateway do not want it.
I'm talking concept.
Okay, so I, I, I will say this. I won't, who am I or who, any of us to say what they want? Let them come here and tell us what they want. Regarding the 25%, it does not say 20, do not exceed. It's 25% is the start. I mean, we absolutely can get a, a, a medium here. If you're going to do a pond and if, if two or three residents are absolutely, we don't want it. We won't put it on behind the houses. We'll put it over else.
We can't stop the growth.
Exactly. Well, but our pond standard does say that, so we wouldn't stop the growth. So let's see, resident A, B, and C, they don't want it. We don't put it there. In a year down the road, they will have some, they have the ability to send an email to staff and say, I want to remove. And we will remove it as long as there is no erosion there. That is our pond standards. They have, they should be have, able to have that ability. But I do believe it's honestly 50/50. I think some do, some don't, some is aesthetic, some, and then after you explain that there's a cost and you're trying to be proactive to, to make the project last longer. So I, I do think there is definitely room for us to work with individual residents living in individual ponds and say, who are the ones that are absolutely 100% now? Don't even plant it there. And tell them if it ever grows, you go in, you request it to be removed and it will be removed as long as it is within, you know, no erosion, no other issues and we'll do it. And then, and that's why I went back to the report that was provided by Keith. It, you know, we went down this path before and it was, and, and with all the respect that it was, everybody's not going to like it. We're not going to like it. And then I wanted to see down the road, like, you know what? What happened? We, we barely had any, like, I, I'll tell you, I did one. I did one request and mine was the one for, so we, we had none. Like, and I'm going with the, you know, unless staff is getting phone calls and not documenting, going there and doing it, we're, it's not that bad. But I absolutely believe we as a board and staff should follow the guidelines is don't put it there. And if they want to remove it and there is no requirement, absolutely should not be there.
We remove it in Pelican. We've had very few people that want it.
We have. So, so I think that's my position.
We have requirements of what the litoral shelf is supposed to be. We've got latorals that are 20, 25 feet out in the lake. They are not advantageous to.
They shouldn't be there.
They're not being maintained.
I would agree.
That's my whole point on all this. We have failed miserably maintaining them.
Then I think, then whoever's responsible for maintaining those lakes, if they're not doing their job.
It's our staff. It's our staff.
We terminate their agreement.
And they have nothing about it. They know about it and they aren't doing anything about it. So it's been that away for years and that's what people see. I can take you over to Hidden Links right now, but people are livid. Those latorals go out in that lake 30 feet. They're nowhere near where they need to be. And that's what people don't believe us. And I can't, I can't stand that by myself. Now, I do, I do have, I don't have a problem with what Tony suggested. I think that's a great idea. As long as we get it as a capability of being put into the facility plan and funded.
Right.
We can do that. We just don't have to make that call.
So what, this is what I suggest. So we, the board has, has said that we would like to re-implement workshops. I've tentatively penciled in items for your April, for your March and April workshop, but I think we could take this up perhaps in your May workshop. In the interim, we just want to get this facilities plan approved. And I think from what I'm hearing is you want to provide the most flexibility as possible. So I think we can take that and, and, and run with that, that option.
Well, let me add one more. Let me add one more thing.
I don't know if that's what I heard. I heard four people want it. Did I hear wrong?
What we're trying to do is.
Well, for the purpose of the facilities plan, it's essentially the same thing. We're not saying this lake is going to get that much right now. It has to get designed still, so we're just asking SRF, hey, we want to include money to put latorals on all the lakes.
So here's what I would say. We, we put in the option to do it, but with the board's direction that we start planning for, at least for the board members, we start planning for latorals on all of these new, on all these new lakes at 25%.
And we will, we will have to amend your, your ponds criteria manual. So this will have to come back in front of the board with that direction. And then as we, as we go through each design, each phase, each, each year, Tetra Tech will design those ponds. It'll come to you guys for approval with exactly the locations of latorals, non-latorals, et cetera. How we make those improvements and you'll make each, each year, each phase, you will approve those. But ultimately you have two, two things that need to be done. We get direction here today, three things that need to be done. We get direction here today for the facilities plan to keep it moving forward. We'll have to come back and amend the ponds manual for Gateway. And then again, as we move forward with these phases, you'll have another say there.
Yeah.
How are we getting around the development order, Tony?
If the development order requires it, you need to comply with it.
That's easy. I'm talking about the ones that don't require it. And you're putting those on somebody's yard that they bought that property on the basis of this development order and that's, those aren't going to be there. How do we get around that? Because that's what they're going to do.
If it's, if it wasn't previously required by the development order, in my opinion, it does not prevent or preclude the district from supplementing and enhancing, I'll call it the ability to maintain lakes or ponds by planting latorals. Now, to do that, I think you need an LDO from Lee County, then you need to comply. If I recall going back.
Say that again, you have to what?
I think you would need an LDO from Lee County to do the plantings in those lakes that do not have requirements. That's my recollection from two or three years ago.
That's what I.
We met with Jessica and I think they then said you could, if you want to remove them later on, you could go back and try to amend and remove them. I have to go back and pull that memo from that conference.
We're not saying change every pond in, in Gateway. We're talking about only those that are going to be.
The majority Bob and Gateway Greens are not latorals.
No, no, I'm not talking about whether to have them or not. All I'm saying is the only ones we're talking about requiring them is where we do pond bank work.
The 33.
That's the 33 remaining. That's the 33.
There's only 33 ponds in, in all of Gateway?
We've done, no, we've done the majority of the ponds that had requirements to be done. That's why we.
You keep going back to requirement.
No, no, what, what, what staff did is we were originally, keep in mind, going to do this facilities plan for like 16, 18 ponds. We said, why do one, two facilities plans? So we put everything remaining from our color coded map, red, orange, and green, yellow, whatever color. We put them all in. So they're all in this proposed deal right now.
Okay.
This is sum and substance, the ponds remaining yet to be done in the community, with the exception of ponds that would have surface areas that are not inclusive of residential. There's about eight or nine of those. And then those that would be golf courses that are not in here. Other than that, these cover the extent of all the residential ponds in Gateway.
108 ponds in, in Greater Gateway.
Greater Gateway, I think is 77 ponds, I would say, 77.
I thought it was 108.
108, all Gateway included yours.
We have 58 alone. We have 58.
What, what's total, 120? Say it again.
We were directly correct.
Also I know is to say.
Pelican has 58 ponds.
I don't, I don't know of any other ponds that are on here that are residential that are not, uh, that are not residential.
In order to get the meeting going on, let's go for, well.
But I have, again, I don't have any problem going with the way that Tony suggested, that we have the ability to do it, but to state we're going to do it right now, I just absolutely cannot go along with that whatsoever.
We don't want to limit our, our opportunity for funding. So that's, that's, we want to maximize.
How does this, how does this limit our opportunity for funding? If we provide to put the latorals in?
No, no, no. If we, if we said we wanted to do the minimum of DO, that's what we're trying to say. We're providing the most flexibility by saying that we're going to do all ponds.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
You know, if I recall. If I recall, the application says this is funding if we do all ponds with latorals. Correct? This is just the plan is.
Yes.
The ability to do all ponds.
Correct.
You're not, you're not picking the technique either. You're not picking the material. You're saying these are costs anticipated, so this is what we're asking for way up here.
Right.
10,000 total.
And, and it's, if you're going to do something that's way up here, you better put it in the report.
Correct.
You can't do it after the.
And I would say for where the, where, you know, doesn't, doesn't require, I think we should be sensitive about how we're going to put those latorals in. And we can work with, you know, whether it's Ed, you or someone from, from that area to make sure that we're, you know, trying to.
To sell it.
To do, to do the right thing. But I just want to go back to one thing we talked about workshops. I don't care about having additional workshops. I want staff to maintain the lakes according to what the standard is. And we should be doing audits, so we should know, I mean, we're walking the lakes. We should know at any given time, and I understand that latorals grow depending on the season, but we should know when we're in control, when we're out of control. And if we're out of control, because here's where the conversation's been in the past. If we're out of control, what does it take to get us back in, in control? Is, and that normally comes back to dollars. It'll cost $250,000 for us to get all the way back. Okay, we don't have that budgeted, so we're not going to do it. That's where the rubber's going to hit the road with us. But I think we're all in agreement. If we have a standard in place that we adhere to that standard and staff enforces that standard along with our vendors. So there should be no complaint from Ed's group or anyone else saying we don't support something that the board wants to do because you haven't, you haven't been able to maintain in the past. That should not how we, we should be operating.
To Ed's comment about the stuff out 30 feet in the pond, that's never acceptable anywhere.
Right.
And I'll tell you one thing, we never get a bill making them take it out.
It's been acceptable here because nobody will do anything about it.
That has to change.
So I will say this. I mean, the, I mean, I, I do read the board pack. It's in this board pack. It says if it, our ponds are in compliance or not. Keith, you can go.
Rarely have ever seen non-compliant.
It says in compliance. So that's, so that's the thing. And then, I mean, with all the respect, I mean, we are, I mean, be the voice, Ed. If, if they're not at 30 feet, tell them to bombard staff with emails. I mean, copy you, copy the board, let them know. We don't get any.
Why, why, why am I doing that? Just do your job.
That's exactly my point.
Do your job. Go out and look at it. When was the last time you went over to Hidden Lakes?
If it's not, if it's out 30 feet, that's.
And I, and if I, Keith, if I were you.
I would have gone there and checked.
I would do random audits of our lakes and you conduct them. And if you see that we have in compliance in a report and they're not, and again, I understand if it's been, you know, if it's in rotation, we've had a lot of rain and there's been a lot of growth, like give or take. But if it's two or three feet past, then someone is not, someone's.
Holding their account.
Right, someone's not accurately dictating the status of the.
And I agree.
I do random checks. Our ponds are in excellent shape, so I would like to know where that's at.
Go to Hidden Links. You been over there?
Hidden Links, yes.
Hidden Links. Then you'll see them 30 feet out.
All right, we've had enough. I think we all agree to violently disagree.
But, but, but the issue, the, the thing is, is that it's not only I see people. It's the people out there seeing it. They don't believe you. They don't believe us.
Okay.
They're not buying it.
Well, we'll look at it and if it is, I'll like a nice report with all the ponds and, and detail. Like, look, we have 88, two are out of compliance, the rest are.
Well, that's another point is that if there's, if there's 88 ponds and we've done, what, 53, 55? What's the status of the other 25?
Well, I was assuming they were good.
Something's wrong. We, we didn't have that many that were good.
Okay.
Now, we had, we had several that were not though residential. We did have that. We've got several of those.
Yes, we did. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
For the lively discussion.
So where do we end up?
All right, we'll get to that. Another component we had to do was look at environmental impacts. On the environmental benefit side of things, we're going to be armoring the lake thing. So we'll prevent future erosion, which is preventing more solids going into the lakes, limiting your storage capacity, preventing suspended solids getting in from the water. Latorals will provide habitat. Environmental impacts, there won't be any. Additionally, South Florida will be happy with us for being in compliance with the permit. So the selective, selected alternative was to go with the ARVS and DO required latorals for all lakes. Let's say, not say DO, let's say LDC required latorals for all lakes. Correct?
I think just a point, I think just a point of clarification, the lakes don't need to have latorals if they currently are not required to have latorals under the LDC, correct?
Yeah, if it's not a DO requirement, they don't have to have them. That's what we're talking about.
Right, but I said, you said, except for LDC required.
Yeah, so.
And that wouldn't count, I think you need to have different.
Well, I'm talking about the requirements per the LDC, meeting those requirements per the LDC.
Meeting the standards outlined, yeah. It's not required, but just the standards.
Right. Thank you for reorganizing my words.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, Stephen.
No, I know you're a lawyer, so you catch things like that, so thank you. So steps to implement.
Wait, wait, hold, back up. It's, and, and you're missing the other bit. And, and with the option of putting latorals where the DO doesn't require them.
Or style.
Our facilities plan is going to say, we're going to do the ARVS and we're going to, we're planning to install latorals that match the land development code requirements where there is not a DO. We have the option to do that.
Okay, yeah, the option, okay. I just want to make sure we're, because we spent 30 minutes talking about it.
Yep.
35.
Clear as mud.
35.
34 and a half.
Steps to implement. Once the facilities plan is approved, we will issue RFI's at different stages. The first stage will be to ask for construction dollars in July for the August hearing. And we will ask for, at the same time, we'll put in an RFI for design money for the next round of lakes.
We will put together a comprehensive timeline of when we anticipate doing design, construction, and which RFI for the, for the next five years as laid out in this facility plan.
You somewhat got it staggered right here on this schedule.
Yeah.
Already.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll make sure.
Which ones will be done in '24, '25?
Yeah. That way we make sure we meet all of our requirements for the, the RFI.
On the next slide, I have just some typical photos of the, the application of the ARVS and what, you know, it looks like at the beginning and then what it looks like at the end. That's essentially the end of it. This last slide here is pond completion of the presentation, public hearing. Resolution is requested for adoption of the stormwater facilities plan while incorporating applicable comments, which we have some, and correcting any scrivener's errors.
Before we move on, would you mind asking for any public comment?
No.
Because you need to, yes, yes.
No, you don't want to ask.
No, I, no, I don't mind.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I did not mind. That was the question, right?
Before the public comment, we're not expecting in the future to have any more SRF loans for this particular topic.
This will get us covered for five years, so once they approve it.
We don't see any beyond the five years. This concludes our effort.
Their, the facilities plans are only good for five years.
Not only that, we could go back. South Florida comes in and tells us, you people have just been ignoring what we told you to do. We've got half of these lakes that still are non-compliant.
That's what I was.
We might have to come back and do those.
No, no, Bob, I just read.
Okay, so this is not, this is just what we know now.
The board has prioritized.
Prioritized the residential, so the other ones are not even in there.
No, that's not true. There are, there are lakes in here that have golf course and road frontages on them.
Minimal, though. We've, we've done a lot of ponds that never touched those.
Right, so this, this one, we looked at all the lakes, and if there was a golf course section that had a lot of erosion and no residential erosion, it was on the priority list.
We've got along the golf course, I can almost categorically say, every lineal foot of the golf course, which is thirty-three thousand lineal feet, are in non-compliance. Are all in non-compliance. They have escarpments, they go down as much as two, two and a half feet.
They have hazards.
Do what?
They have golf hazards, right?
Golf hazards.
Golf hazards.
First time we have a golf cart, first time we have a golf cart go over and out of, into the lake, I guess we'll find out.
So are there any public comments, questions?
Has anybody signed up to speak, Laura?
No, there's no one, and I do not have anything in the chat either.
And no other comments by fax or email or.
No. No.
Thank you.
So we have maximized this facilities plan. We've max, which is, is, it's good for five years. We've maximized what we believe a contractor would be able to complete each fiscal, each year, each cycle. And we have prioritized based on the board's approval and direction, the residential side. We've identified all of the red and orange as part of the priority list. And again, we, we expanded that at the last discussion because we, we didn't want to do this twice.
And there's nothing that we are committing to that says that if we would have pond ninety-seven down in the bottom in twenty-twenty-eight, that for whatever reason would become a bad deal, we could pull it up to twenty-twenty-five, we want it. In other words, we can adjust this any way we want.
And none of this fifteen million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand is, includes what we've already spent.
No.
So we've already spent, how much?
We're going to be spent, we've said it years and years and years, it was going to be twenty-five million, and if you add this to what we've spent, it's twenty-five million.
So we've only spent, or committed, ten million of others than this. So we're going to be at twenty-five million in this without consideration of the other ones you just mentioned that we haven't even looked at.
Well, this also considers doing HPT, or the ArmorMax on every single linear foot, which we're not going to do.
Worst case scenario.
Okay, let's go.
This is a high watermark.
Yeah, this.
Madam Chair, the appropriate hour, if so were, to have a motion to close the public hearing and enter the board to engage in discussion and consideration of adopting the resolution with just one adjustment that's from what's in our reading book.
So I have a motion by Doug and a second by Bob to close the public hearing. I'm in favor, say aye.
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 And it's appropriate for the board then to consider adoption of the resolution two thousand twenty-three dash eighteen. And the revised Exhibit A is the actual affidavit of publication, and that's in the updated website version of this agenda item. And it would be included as Exhibit A, and then I think it would be appropriate for the board to adopt, so inclined, the resolution, adopting the facilities plan with the corrections or adjustments and clarification as outlined by Mr. Goppi in the board's discussion concerning laterals.
I so moved.
Okay, so we have a, a motion by Bob. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carol, now in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you. Aye to whatever Tony just said.
All right, so now we'll back to District Manager. District Manager report?
So we have the monthly reports from the three departments. I'll turn it over to Laura for.
My main update is we're rolling along with the accounting software. We've started training, Julie and I have, and our plan as of right now is to launch the new system in the middle of March, which means we'll be able to produce March's financials for you for April, and I can start customizing reports. I do have one update with the Granicus software. We got notification from them that there is a free to us service where people are eligible to sign up to automatically receive the agendas when they're published. So we have automatically added you to all of the board and, well, extend the process of adding all of your gateway email addresses to all of the regular and subcommittee meetings. If you wish to have them at your personal email addresses, you will need to sign up that for yourself. But your, your gateway email addresses are automatically all assigned, as well as anybody on those subcommittees.
See, you'll be able to help us with that.
Yes.
And if you're, if you're a liaison to a specific subcommittee, we've already signed up your gateway email to that subcommittee. And we've done you for all of the subcommittees.
So it'd be the us, the chairman and the liaison, the chairman and liaison.
We, we did not, we did not sign up the chairman of each subcommittee or committee. This just got, this, the information was just given to us yesterday evening, so. But ultimately, what will happen is as soon as we publish the agenda, you'll get an email notification that the agenda was published, and you'll be able to access it.
I just think it'd be appropriate to include the various, but they're part of the subcommittee, so they might already be there.
We, we gave a list of the members and the email addresses for each of the subcommittees to them, to set them up, so, yep.
Great.
And you're on everything Pelican.
Thank you.
So let me, let me ask one question this, and then I'll pass it on to Carol. Would residents have the ability?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so they can sign up for.
So maybe that's something that Randy can post it out?
With this hasn't even gone live yet. As soon as it goes live, we will give simple instructions, and of course, if anybody has any issues, they can always contact us and we can help them sign up, or sign up on their behalf.
We literally got this last night and are working through the setup process as it goes right now.
Are all these blue highlighted areas part of Granicus?
Yes.
Is that Granicus?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions on the rest of the report? For admin.
Yeah, I have some questions on the notes to the financial, which is on financial report page thirty-one, but our page one seventy-six on the screen. We pull up page one seventy-six of the agenda. Uh, no.
This is page one seventy-six.
Yeah, that's the notes, interference.
Okay, the, the, the next page then. There. Okay, um. I noticed, so we are four months into the, the year, correct? So this would be one-third of the budget, correct? Okay, so under utility services, where maintenance and repairs, it's already at a hundred and ninety-two percent of the budget. Can you tell us why we're so over budget on that?
So at your last, I believe it was your last meeting or the meeting before last, this is, this only exemplifies the disconnect between our, our accounting team on the other coast and what actually occurs here. So I believe at the, the meeting, either last or before, two meetings ago, we asked for your guys' approval where we had that sewer break right at the end of the fiscal year and the start of the fiscal year, and we asked to move the money. That clearly hasn't transpired as part of this, this monthly report. That's why there's.
Re reconcile, reconcile.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then there's two landscape items, one at the top, landscape services, and then under expenditures, landscape services. One's at seventy-seven percent of the budget, the other one's at a hundred percent of the budget. Is there some reason why we've already spent that much money?
That would be Ian.
Well, it's, 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 we have Stony Brook approved that contract for Joshua Tree for all of the tree pruning as part, as part of their fund. And then we, for the tree trimming, we've already done the tree trimming for the, I don't know if it's the palms.
The other, the other thing is normally the way that this works, Carol, is the front end of our fiscal year is normally very heavy with these kinds of expenses, and it tapers off as the year goes on because we've got the funding and people have been waiting to have the POs issued, so there, there's normally a lot more activity in the first four, five, six months of the fiscal year than there is in the second half. So it'll, it normally tapers off.
It'll level out.
Yes, and, and part of it is due to the hurricane, which we weren't expecting.
Okay.
But there's, there's always a lot more activity at the beginning of the fiscal year than there is later in the fiscal year.
Can we retrieve any of that cost for landscaping?
I don't think the way that our deductibles were for the insurance, we had talked to them about that, and the, with what our deductibles would be and the way it's spread out and categorized, we wouldn't be able to recover that, but we did.
There wasn't a large amount
Right.
for the landscaping. This is mainly for that tree trimming of all the palms that we had done early on. But any, anything that we can recoup through insurance, we have submitted, and we're still waiting for them for, to make their, their determination.
They're reviewing right now. We got a reply from them. We've been checking, gosh, I submitted that in December, and they're still reviewing it as of, it was either Friday or Monday they sent an email that they're still reviewing. I'm sorry?
What's our deductible?
Uh, it depends. It's all over the place depending on what it is. Everything is a different amount.
But we have something that has an opportunity of going over the deductible?
Mostly the streetlights and like the soccer field lights. It's a lot of the electrical that we have the opportunity to recover the cost, but the landscaping yeah, the street signs, those kind of things. The higher dollar items, but a lot of the trimming and the cleanup from the debris from the hurricane on the landscape side was below our limits.
Okay.
And so that's what I was going to ask, under, under the R and M tree trimming services, they wanted seventy-seven percent. That includes the trimming of all the palm trees that were completed by Loot, right?
Yes.
So, so it's actually, knowing what they charges, it's not really a lot of money that was hurricane on the landscaping services, not like under twenty thousand?
I'd say probably even.
Uh, I think the one that we got from Big T was around thirty thousand, so probably about two-thirds of that was for that big job. I would say that PO was around thirty-ish.
But I thought we decided not to do it and wait for the county to do it.
Uh, to go back and look.
Yeah, I, I did not, I, I did not recall that. It was nineteen thousand, five hundred.
We did have.
Just looking into that, because I know the first one, we said, you know, just wait because it's going to be another round in a few weeks.
If the costs, I believe, are nominal, because we did have mainscape at least try to pile them and pile.
Yeah.
And so do I. I'm talking trimming that clean up. Yeah, I'm talking.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else for admin before we go into the next report?
I have nothing. Have you have anything?
No.
Okay. Next, we have Public Works, and no, we don't have any items identified for board direction or attention, but Keith is here. If you have any questions for him.
I have just one. There was, I seem like I remember reading something where people having issues with their, the gate to the dog park. Is there, is it still broken or is it?
It's still broken. Innovative is our vendor doing the repairs to that, along with all of our new security cameras and fobs for our doors, and they're scheduled to be completed by Wednesday of next week.
Has it been down for a while?
It has been down between the hurricane flooding, having the dog park closed. That's right about the time when the motherboard failed on the door, on the door control. And since that time, we were either manually opening it every day, or then, then we eventually put it on a timer to where it would open all day and then lock itself at night.
So people have had access to.
People have had access.
Okay, so I mean, I read some things where it's been closed for four months.
The complaint is quite opposite. They were upset because too many people have access to it, and they didn't pay for it, and it, it was quite, yeah.
I, I do have a question about that, because we recently met with the pool folks and there were, just in discussions, you know, we don't charge for the, the pool, yet we charge for the dog park, and I, maybe we can talk offline. I just, I didn't understand the logic behind, you know, charging both gateway residents and non-residents for the access to the dog park. But we don't, then at the pool, we don't charge gateway residents for that amenity.
Well, originally, if I'm not mistaken, the reason why, and maybe Margaret might have more insight on this, but I think the reason why we charged for the, for the dog park was originally, it was part of, of a resident group saying if we build the dog park, we can charge for it to offset the recurring costs. So it was, it was more sustainability from an O and M perspective on why we did that, because it was a net new facility. In order to get that pushed through, there was some additional revenue that could be generated through, through cost. And, and that group that was driving that were perfectly happy with, with an annual cost in order to get the dog park built.
Okay, so it was under the assumption that the, the revenues from that dog park pass would cover the total expenses of the dog park?
Yes, which that's not the case.
I don't think it, I don't think it was told. I think it was to assist.
Subsidize it. Okay, I just.
Well, I don't think they were anticipating back then the amount of sod replacement and.
I was just trying to understand, you know, we charged for one, but not the other.
And on that, I, I think Laura will remember this, and just not maybe six months ago or so, when we had the issue with the sod and they were even, they, they filled up the room, they, they say they were willing to pay even more as long as they get sod, so it's quite different than.
Okay, well, we'll discuss that as part of the fee schedule.
And then Keith, the other thing is, if you could just have mainscape or maybe staff, just right now as the seasons are kicking back up, if you could. He's asking a question. Go ahead, Kathleen, do, do what you.
Oh, the reason for them paying was for the vaccination requirement.
In addition to, yeah, right. So if you could just have staff or mainscape, just be aware of some of the conditions on the field, especially because I've noticed there's some, some holes. And I don't know why we want to put sand in those holes when you've got eight and nine-year-olds and six-year-olds running around. It's like putting Skittles in a bucket, you know?
They eat it?
No, they just want to, they want to just play, I mean, it's like, you know, they want to dig it. So you take a hole, you put sand in it. Might as well put a tractor or a truck or a shovel on top of it, because they just want to dig that back up. Maybe if we had at least a mound repository of actual sod, we could put it in, pack it down.
It's getting so much used.
If we don't have sod plugs.
It's getting so much used, Doug, that I think every day it would just be out.
Yeah, but I'm talking about there's, there's holes, like, like about this big, that I'm just afraid the kids are going to twist their ankles. And, and it starts with a small hole, and then when you put sand in it, they want to dig the sand out and it makes the hole bigger. It's just, you know, so just tell them to be aware. I just don't think sand is the right replacement for holes on, on an athletic field, you know, it's, you know, it's, so I just want you to be aware of that, because I've seen it just a couple of that, that was like, ah, that's. Yeah, but that's all I had on that. Thanks, appreciate it.
Anybody, anything, any other questions for Keith?
So we have a lot of stuff going on in Public Works, and with hopefully the bonds being approved and issued and everything, wrapping those up next month, we'll have a lot more projects. And so I, I just want to reiterate earlier, you know, we lost Maddie. Although she was an intern, she was still, you know, an extra set of hands and, and time spent. So we are working on tracking our time spent, especially with our, our maintenance staff and where they're focusing their efforts on a weekly basis and tracking that, you know, kind of gearing up for budget. And we, this week, we've had Mark from AECOM back to assist Keith in the oversight of our contractors and reporting back daily of the work that they've been performing, so there's a lot, a lot of stuff going on, a lot of projects. Hopefully, we can start some, wrap some up, so just please have some patience with us as, as we continue to work through that and hopefully backfill some, some vacant positions.
So just one little thing, I had it on my notes, regarding irrigation and gateway as a whole. So yesterday, actually, I drove out and I met with maintenance, mainscape, because I saw that they, they were installing the trees, and they're in the final process of getting the irrigation, the bubblers installed. I think it looks really nice. I mean, I think they're really close together. That was a concern.
I, I saw Freddie this morning and made the same comment, and he and Jim were going to go look at it as well.
Okay, because, and then, so when I was talking to mainscape irrigation and looking at what we have on one side, which they're forty feet apart, this is twenty, but it looked like ten, you know, I mean, they were really on top of each other. It's a lot of trees. But I, I did see a reduction, and, and, and I kind of, it was really nice, actually, just to show up there and then just try to get an understanding. A huge reduction on tickets from, from mainscape regarding irrigation mainly, right? So, and we're getting four or five pages, and I could tell that staff was putting in tickets. I could tell the residents was putting in tickets. Stony Brook people were putting in tickets. Mainscape a little bit. Now, if you look at this, there's barely any, any reflects what you see out there. There is dead grasses. There, I know there's a bunch of issues, but I think there's a delay, because this is the only reporter we should be using, and that's the reason why it's in the bar book. So I go by this and this only. This is showing out there all over the place. And then I had a resident.
You're saying we're, we're, there's more damages out there than there are tickets to document?
Oh, absolutely. This will cover ten percent.
And you think it's, it's because staff isn't putting the tickets in, or because residents aren't taking time to put the tickets in anymore?
Well, I can tell you who puts the tickets in. It literally tells me, so I can tell the staff it's one, two, three.
Okay, so you're, you're anticipating staff.
Four tickets.
Doing, being more diligent.
We've had a lot of irrigation issues in this last reporting period, so when you see that report for the next, next report, you're going to see a lot more in there.
And so, so that's what I'm concerning, because what we're seeing now, it didn't just start last week, it started a little bit before. And then I'm looking at this, and it's like, maybe we're dropping the ball. We're not reporting as fast as we could, and that's why it's getting bigger and bigger and worse.
Is the pothole on?
So these are issues the mainscape needs to address.
Yes.
That mainscape is identifying.
No.
Them being contacted.
No.
Everybody.
So, so this, an example, so then we have like Stony Brook, Margaret actually sent an email yesterday saying, hey, I reported this before, and it wasn't fixed. So that ticket was there, so, so.
It is there or is not there?
Uh, not, because this is from the previous one, but in the next month, we will see that ticket in. But the majority of the items here, it's, it would, which you, you should be able, I mean, my expectation is honestly to see a lot of our staff, whoever's responsible, hey, because the way it looks, hey, this is not working, there's a dry area here, dry area here, dry area there, something broken here, and there's barely any.
How do we know that all the ones that our neighbors and friends send in?
Well, that's what I was.
They should, and so that's what I'm saying.
That's a mainscape document is what I read it as.
Why wouldn't we get CC'd here so that if we get fifteen tickets, we see fifteen results?
And we should. So what I'm saying is residents, residents are stay the same. It's staff. That is not, they're waiting on mainscape to drive by.
Address it on their own.
On their own, and, and, and it's, it's not a good route to go in, because it's, it's showing out there.
Right now, we're reactive and we need to be proactive.
Exactly, and then I, so then the question regarding the wet check, so this is what was eye-opening to me. So he said, with our current contract, how it goes is, they will do a wet check the first ten days, the first ten days of the month, right? They'll do a wet check. They will tell everything that needs to be done, they'll send it to Laura. And this is what the contract requires, and then Laura will prove the PO or not, so there's a way. So now they're being, yeah, so, or whoever would be the one to prove it.
Who's monitoring the wet check? Because I've had this for fifteen years. If you aren't monitoring the wet check, you might as well just write it off.
So that was my question. So that was my question to him, because under the contract, they are supposed to provide a report. So I said, how are you doing the, the wet checks? Like, do you come in and you just take three hours or a whole day to drive all the roads and do the, all the, you know, the wet checks and then report it to us? And then work with additional things that we do? And he said, no, that is not how they do it. They drive around, and if they see something that's wrong, they will go in and they try to fix it right away, because they say they now establish a better relationship, that if it's under a thousand dollars, they just go and fix it. So I did not think a true wet check is not happening. We're getting repair. Exactly. So what I would like to do is to see it, if that could be either staff, because that honestly, to do all of it, including irrigation, it will, I would say it takes five hours. So whoever Jim is, if he takes five hours, because he doesn't need to assess exactly what, what the issue is, he can just generally say, this whole area is dry, then go and send. Either staff can do that, or we're going to hold the vendor accountable for doing that per the contract, but that's missing. We need to get that.
How many nodes do we have? How many nodes? How many nodes? Battery-operated nodes?
A hundred.
A hundred. Okay, we got about thirty. Who checks to verify what's your requirements for battery replacement? Every six months?
I think it's, I have to check.
Like ours is every six months. We went over the other day and opened one up, twenty sixteen.
They're not doing that.
Yeah, they're not doing that.
Twenty sixteen written on the battery.
I, I can, I can tell you, they only go in if.
You've got to spot check. That's all you can do.
So, so, so that's my only thing with, and it's not something new, it's something that Laura and I sat with them three years ago and talked about it. So I think this is a time that we, we need to.
I will tell you, it's, it is recognized and we're making.
Well, the thing that we're finding is, is it's not just mainscape. We've got about five other vendors that do neighborhood associations within ours. They're awesome.
Yeah.
They do not have the staff to spend the time to do wet checks like it needs to be done. What they should be doing on those wet checks is going to each one of those zones. We've got, I forget how many there are, probably three hundred zones. Every one of those ought to be turned on at the controller to verify that, one, the water comes out. Every one of those ought to be turned on at the controller to verify that one, the water comes out. And then two, how many heads are broken?
Which way they.
That I'm telling you takes a lot of time. Just to turn those on and run them for a minute, a minimum, a minute. It takes one.
I don't know if your systems are different than the Pelican system, but in Pelican, the guy walks around with the meter, goes every neighborhood, turns it on, watches it zone by zone. You can watch him do that. He does it all the time. I don't know if it's different than.
Well, here's what it boils back to.
So that's how I check.
Yeah. Okay.
What he's doing is he's only going if the grass is dead, then he goes into that box, turn it on and figure out why is it that? That's what I have a problem with.
We need to be proactive and noted.
Here's what we go back to. What does the contract stipulate?
Yes.
Yeah. And whatever the contract stipulates is what we should be enforcing. And if, and if what we want is not on the contract, then we, we make sure that we update it down the road.
Which this is, you know, so that's my thing.
And I have a question too. So when, when they go and do a wet check and they, or however, whatever they're calling it, and they find an issue, do they document that issue? And then resolve it that same day? Or they just, they fix it and they don't document?
So that's what he told me yesterday. They're fixing it. Now do I know if you guys are receiving a, a list of items? I'm assuming when you have to pay for it.
That's a good example. How many reports have you get back a follow-up on a wet check? We found this, 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 and this. We get none.
Yeah. And, and I would like to document it's onsite repair. So if it, if, you know, whatever we agree to, but if they identify an issue and it's an onsite repair, they should at least, they still got to track it.
Unfortunately, our observation of the wet check occurs when we see the brown dead grass. That's our observation.
And that's, that's only identifying one issue.
It's too late.
We, we will address this.
We got the same problem.
Is this some harescape?
Main T. And same thing with the resolution. Prior to this, we used to get the resolution here. So not only was a problem, there was a resolution on the report. So, and now they're not doing that anymore.
Okay.
So they were adding additional nodes. So like this happened and then this was, so a resolution or the problem was, it's gone.
We'll ask them for the resolution back.
Do you have to pay every time they find a broken head?
Yes.
Depends on the contract, what, what's included and what's not included.
Our contract, yes. If anything is broken.
Because I mean, they would never miss an opportunity to bill you.
You would think that.
So now you don't pay for batteries. That's included.
That I do not know.
I don't know about batteries either.
If you've got a broken node, you're going to pay for that. Those little suckers cost, that's about 150 bucks each.
Here's a couple of takeaways. We will make sure they're doing and following the contract for the wet checks. We will make sure that if they're doing infield repairs, that they're documenting it through the work system. And even if they're fixing it, repairing it in five minutes, that they still note it. We will, there's one other thing.
Well, you would think it would be their best interest to fill that report and make it look.
It might be heavy. Yeah.
And the third thing is we have, we have funding as part of the bond to fix our nodes or our irrigation.
Install the controllers.
Install the controllers because we're still battery operated. So when we're, our plate isn't a Thanksgiving platter, we will get, because we're going to have to bid that out because it's a cost. We will start to draft the scope.
Wait a minute, wait, say, say that again.
We have to bid that out.
Bid what out?
To upgrade, to upgrade the current system, which is a residential system to a commercial. What concerns me with that is that.
Hold on man. Let me tell you on that one. We ran into that. You hire a firm, and this is my opinion, our attorney's opinion. We hired a firm and we went through a bid process. We use them to do the design of our new control zone. If you're going to bid that out, who's going to design it?
Well, that's, we haven't, we haven't even.
As far as we're concerned, when we hire mainscape, we have them, we hired them to do that zone. Now we pay them extra to do the zone and we're paying them almost a quarter, a half a million dollars to put in the controllers. We didn't go out and bid those. Who's going to bid the job? Nobody's going to touch that with a 10 foot pole. If you come in there and they're doing that work and they screw something up while mainscape's got the contract, mainscape's going to do a Pontius Pilate. They're going to wash their hands and say, you bought it. I wouldn't touch that with a 10 foot pole. Don't bid out work that's going to lead to a conflict down the road. You're just asking for trouble.
The difficulty is Florida statutes require.
We did. We bid it when we bid the job.
Construction projects, yeah, over a certain dollar amount required to engage in competitive solicitation.
We are required.
We bid, we bid the job when we wired, uh, hired them to begin with. We put it out for bid.
We will, again, we haven't even opened this can yet.
I'm just telling you, I've been down this road and you're going to get into the same place I got and it was a brick wall. Who's going to design the system?
Understood. We will.
Because if, if mainscape, this is what we had people in the community say, let mainscape design the system. Now, mainscape can't bid then. They got conflict of interest.
We.
Who knows the system better than them? You're making a big mistake. Big mistake.
We are going to make sure that we are following CCNA and how, and.
And the construction required being required.
Well, attorney was of the opinion, we did not have a problem because we bid the work out.
You guys are in HOA, we have.
And we have not.
It doesn't make any difference. It's still Florida.
We have, we have not bid out the construction work. We've only bid out the maintenance work. And that, that, so there's no construction component to the.
Let's you and I talk after.
Yeah. It's, it's, I'm just telling you, I, you will end up where I, I've, I've spent a year getting this thing together. Because we were worried how we were going to handle it with that grant we were going for.
We.
This very issue.
We're going to bid it.
You call ahead.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to you. I'll talk to you later.
It's a mess.
Okay.
Okay. So nothing else for Keith?
Is there any, anything else for Keith?
Yeah, one thing, at the last meeting, uh, or maybe the meeting before last, we talked about the pool hours and that staff was going to get together. Did you get together with that group?
We, we did get together. Um, Tim and I.
My, I'm catching hell over there on my side because I got a lot of people that use the pool and are very upset about it.
So Tim, Tim and I met with a, a group headed up by Mr. Dave, Dave Ruth, who's here with us. We agreed to adjust the morning hour to 8:00 AM instead of 8:30 AM. They have five volunteers that are willing to assist us in, in the closing procedures or partial closing procedures of the pool. Tim is actually out, um, until early next week, but, um, we are looking at those five volunteers and how we can utilize their services. Um, and still.
That's great.
It's utilize their services through, uh, non-paid.
We have a volunteer form.
Okay. Um, perfect. So we want to see what we have to do with closing procedures and what we can move to the morning shift compared to not doing it in the evening shift for closing and making sure we're meeting our Department of Health requirements for our testing. So.
So are the natives not as restless?
Start accommodated their main request.
It was a, it was a compromise, but we still have the closing time that is of concern of the community. So we're, we're going to try to work with that, that volunteer group.
Oh, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that people are reaching out and saying that they're using the pool. So for us, it's like, it's validation that people do use a pool.
And this, and this task force that, um, they've, they've deemed themselves have been very vocal and have a lot of great ideas to help increase the numbers and, and working with staff. Yes.
That's a big thing. Okay.
Essentially, on balance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And then lastly, we have the, uh, utilities report, which I will be covering since we don't have a utilities director right now. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
I do not have any.
I don't. Okay.
Just, um, so, so you're aware, um, we're, we're actively recruiting for a utilities director position. Kenny's responsibilities, um, we've kind of divvied up amongst the staff and myself included. So I'm heavily involved in the roundabout. We were at the pre-con today, um, trying to work through some of those issues which have, which would have typically been the utilities director. So I'm just, I'm letting you know, some of my time is being taken up. We're trying to make sure that we're compliant with FDEP and all of our regulatory, um, reporting. Austin's working on that. Leslie's handling purchase orders. Isaac's taking a lot of the field stuff. So we're dividing and conquering until we can at least, uh, backfill this position. Again, I'm not in a rush to fill this role. I want to make sure it's a good fit for both staff and the person coming in.
Well, the last meeting there was an indication that there might be a change. Did something change to that change?
Yes. His, Kenny's last day was, uh, that, the third.
Okay. So that change didn't materialize.
Correct. But if you have any utility issues or questions in the interim, please contact me directly. The guys are, um, there, we still have one vacancy in, in utilities. Um, so we're trying to fill that, uh, position. But if you have any utility related questions, please contact me. And if I can't get you the answer, I will get, I will find the answer or I will get you in contact with the right person.
And we still have those four candidates that.
We have four. We still have it posted out there. Unfortunately, the gentleman who was supposed to fly in tomorrow, his, his mother-in-law passed away. So he has to reschedule. Um, we do have a shortlist, but like I said, it's still open. I want to make sure it's, again, it's the, the person we bring in is, is a good fit and meets all of our requirements or has the.
We renewed the postings to keep it up there to see.
Well, cause I, I think I recall the conversation, what you, there were one or two that you were, you thought.
The shortlist is.
I just don't want to lose it. Like if there's somebody that we think it is, I mean, I don't want to be in positions that we were in the past.
We're, okay, we're good.
All right. So nothing utilities. So Tony?
Yeah. Uh, just going through this brief, if you have any questions. Uh, the first one, the, still working on various deeds to the district and, uh, primarily with Charles Mann from WCI. With regards to the Stony Brook roads and, and streets, I've had a conversation with the county attorney's office and we'll be having a meeting with assistant county attorney and the county lands manager to talk about what documents they may need to get to move forward with that process of the, the step about us giving Stony Brook roads to the county and the county giving them to the.
Is that meeting with the county lands manager? Is that Marla or is that?
Uh, Bob Clements.
Okay, Bob Clements.
Good guy.
I've, yeah, I've worked with him.
Yeah, he's really, yeah, we worked with Bob a lot. We did the local agreement on the roads. And Joe Adams and I have had some initial discussions and so, Joe then talked to Bob and said, that's, you know.
So with, with regards to the Stony Brook conveyance, we had a, a different meeting about the landscaping with the Stony Brook HOA the other day. And, and I did notify them that the board directed Tony to work on this potentially conveyance to the county and then the county to, to the HOA. And I did request from them, um, some, some letter, if it's there for or against, or whatever it may be, from the HOA to reassure the district and, and the county on their stance with regards to accepting the roadways.
Yeah. Ultimately, in my initial conversation with Joe Adams, that is an important consideration, the support of the community behind this concept. It'll be important to provide.
So we're, we're waiting. It's the balls in their court with regards to a letter.
I can go with part of that, that it would be supportive, but it is not necessary.
I understand it's not stopping me from proceeding a meeting with the county.
Correct.
But Joe Adams articulated that, you know, the reality of sometimes other county commissioners may want to, may want to see that. By validation, we know where that is. It's been a good team effort. Uh, it seems like it's been longer than it should have been. Pardon?
So close to being done.
It, it, yeah. Still working with Charles Mann on the, I'm pushing that back just to touch, but I'm still pushing for next week to get that from Charles on the comments. The hotwire damage claim, Chelsea and I spoke, hotwire is being totally uncooperative and we will, I know, ask them to engage in a alternative dispute resolution process. And if not, we will come back to the board to discuss options. The claim amount is $18,000, which is a county court claim. If you make a claim for eight, under 8,000, 8,000 or under, it's a small claims matter. So that's something we would need, if we don't resolve this through the alternative, uh, informal dispute resolution, then we'll come back to the board. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not totally shocked. Any subsurface contract we've dealt with in the past has just been impossible to deal with, quite frankly. On the infrastructure easement ownership identification, I have an initial draft of some portion of it. Talked to Mr. Geppert and Chelsea and I met with Mr. Geppert earlier and I met, I've chatted with Mr. Geppert since about the formatting to make sure all the documents that are, support documents will be appropriate and what the PPAC and what the sport will be looking for are in there. It's taken a little longer than I want to, only because not everything is readily available, but I think I have a, a better idea of now how to present it. It's going to be, I mean, I'm contemplating a large book with all the backup. Are, are you ready to schedule the, the walkthrough with the marescape? Oh, yeah. One thing we, uh, talk about is Chelsea and Bob, Bob volunteered for you to go for a walk.
Of course he did.
Well, with staff. Yeah. And, and what the game plan is by next Friday. She's heard this before. We talked about it. We've reached the, we've reached the point where it'd be appropriate now to go out with a marescape and with ourselves to say, here is the walk. What do you currently do? And compare that to the map.
There, there's, there's a lot of, not only with the subcommittees, but with this intern, with staff and with the board on the results of this, of this.
Right.
This report because our marescape contract is up for renewal at the end of March. And so we're in order to, to do like we did with mainscape and clean up all of the parcels that we shouldn't, should not be maintaining. We'd like to do the same thing with that contract. So the sooner we get this reports, our, our landscape lead and public works director, if he so chooses to, to walk, can work on identifying the parcels that we perhaps shouldn't have been maintaining. And work with those specific HOAs or property owners to rectify that.
That portion is going to be a very small part of the total.
That, that is, that is a piece of the larger puzzle. There's the updating.
You're exactly right.
Updating the O and M. There's working with the three subcommittees and their, their duties and their responsibilities and what parcels or pieces that they're responsible for overseeing.
And the media part with regards to walking certain areas that I've identified, the district does not have an easement, but the district may be maintaining landscaping. I've got the aerial that Tetra Tech had, that I'm updating it with other information that I can circle and identify those areas that makes it easier. So what we, what I'm hoping to do right now to come. You'll have that next week. Is for, for us to set up a date, you, you can call it for when we do this walkthrough. You'll have that information to what Tony's currently got.
We'll have to, we'll have to set it up after we get his thing. So we can at least have a preliminary review and, and.
Yes. And you'll have that map next week as to those areas that I appear to be areas outside district easements.
I'll wait to see the document.
Oh, no. It's, uh, we had a nice conversation with Mr. Geppert and so it's. Yeah. I reviewed it today. We're, it's getting much closer, but so we're ready for the next step. Of course, once that's done, then we start the whole process of getting the easements that we need.
Yep. If the board so chooses.
If the board so chooses to.
The fun part.
You, you know that February 23rd is next week.
Yes.
Thursday.
Yes.
Okay. Are we still good on that date or?
The disclaimer part? Okay. We're talking about the. Oh, no, no, that needs to be changed. I was, I circled that. I was, I was heading to the right-hand side in just a moment. Carol, that date started last August. No, the completion date is going to be in March, but initial interim will be next Friday. For the areas where, that need to be walked to identify whether or not the district wants to continue maintaining landscaping, if they are maintaining landscaping, not within an easement.
Well, let's get, we'll get the map. We'll, staff will review it against the existing contract and then we'll, we'll schedule a date to walk it.
Yep. And, and again, what you have is you have the preliminary map is performed by Tetra Tech based upon information they believe came from Platts. One of, at least one area was replanted. So there's a different designation and the district has that, whereas before PPCA had it. Then there are some assignments of dedications. Then there are some grants of easement. So there's a number of other documents outside the platid area.
Lot of components.
Yeah. So.
This is fun.
Oh, it's, it's, it's helped improve my Adobe Pro graphic skills.
Snake under every brush.
So what, what is your anticipated completion date?
Right now it's ultimately probably, I'm mid-March, March, let's just pay, March 14th. No, no, no. I'm doing March 14th. I'm not doing the.
March 15th, the Ides of March.
I said 14th. Not, not April 1st. Now, March, March 14th will be a revised date for that. And what, again, it's going to be a, a cover memorandum, introduction, references to the various documents and the backup to show why, it's my opinion, the district has or doesn't have certain facilities. And again, we're going back to 19 requisitions from 03, 04, 05. We're going back to conveyances since then. And so I'm, not to exceed this 5,000, it's going to cost a lot more, but obviously I will not get paid a lot more. So, because it isn't not to exceed. I'm not going to build a district for any more than what was in there, obviously.
Pelican appreciates that.
I know. I mean, that's just how.
Wiggle there.
No, that's how I operate. I mean, you know, it was an estimate based upon what I, how difficult or easy I thought it would be. It's turning out to be much more difficult. What?
That's life. Yeah.
I know. So I mean, it's, I mean, that's just. Pelican Reserve Tree Line and Colonial signed parcels. I've, uh, sent off my memo to Von Counsel and Carol. And I will have a phone call with Von Counsel next week. Von Counsel has some questions with regards to that property. So we'll have a phone call on Tuesday. All right. We have a warranty deed for it. The district has a warranty deed. Absolutely.
Please include me on that call.
Okay. Uh, prepare, review, in, in local agreement with the school. We're still waiting for them. I think Chelsea.
Yes, I did reach out to them, uh, last week poking them.
So that date, Chelsea, where do you want to make that? March 31st now? I mean, it's.
What date was your, uh, other thing?
It's a 228 for the ILA. But it's all dependent on the school.
Yeah, it's, it's. March.
Yeah. I'll move to March and, uh, next week I'll have my review and comments back to Chelsea and Laura on the proposed revised policy procedure manual, the North Haven submittal. The North Haven submittal, uh, we followed up as to that. Daniels Parkway Apartments submittal, my comments were provided as you know. What's not on here, the Gateway Charter High School, uh, there are some easements that need to be provided. I have the title commitment and reports provided by Rick Bylansky. And my goal is by the 23rd, you have outlined those areas or any other additional documents we need. We might need consents of mortgage holders for that property. And I've already told you about the Stony Brook roads. So, if anything else the board has or questions.
Any questions for Tony?
There, I will just say that there are a couple of things that are sitting in between my queue and his queue for things that we're working on, um, that you don't see listed here. For instance, a resolution for, Stephen Blum reached out, said, uh, and updated of the trustee services for one of the Pelican bonds. That's a resolution Tony will be drafting for the next board meeting. We have the, um, there was something else. I, I, I lost it, anyway. Anyway, there's just other things that are going on in the background that, the easements for the, um, we're waiting on Grady Minor for the easements for the administrative building, so as soon as we get those, we'll get Tony's review and, and work through, with Hampton Park.
Just on that conflict area.
Yes, with Hampton Park HOA on trying to resolve those issues.
Oh, the sidewalks that encroach and meander and.
The entire monument sign and all their landscaping, yes.
They called the whites to know why there were pink stakes in there in the property. They said they didn't know we were gonna put a building there.
So, and just letting you know that there are some other things that are not on this list that we are working on collectively.
Thank you.
Yeah, when I saw the survey and I saw those signs, I went.
Yeah.
Then I looked at the property report and went. I don't see an easement on there, so.
And, and just some other things too, like I said earlier about that, that Mainscape contract and reviewing, you know, we've met with certain, um, communities that have rebutted some of the, um, letters that we've sent regarding the ownership or access or easement or maintenance responsibility. Timber Ridge, um, they, they had in question about the berm along Griffin and who's, you know, I guess there were some past meetings and we're working with Tony on clarifying exactly easements and ownership and responsibility and things of that. So, we've, we've reviewed the plat, we know what the plat says, um, but there may have been some handshake agreements back in the day from staff members that.
Yeah, well, so, so, that one is, should be fairly recent and I can tell you, I was already sitting on this board and the board did not agree with, with any of that.
So, we are working on providing the proper documentation to show to that HOA and to explain, you know, the reason behind us sending that letter and working with Tony and.
Yeah, because the toe of the berm should be on their easement side, it should, again, the toe of the berm is within their easement.
So, there's.
From Gateway Boulevard to the toe of the berm is solely within the right of way.
Yeah.
In my opinion. The initial specs have been drafted to say top of the berm.
So, there, there's.
To say to the.
A lot of one-offs that are coming up as a result of actions taken by staff.
Okay.
All right.
No other questions for Tony? Okay, so, um, future board business?
Agenda management.
Agenda management. We have requested, um, a closed-door session for the Whitfield case for the 22nd, which is not your normal regularly scheduled date, so, um, please put it.
4:00 PM. 4:00 it's been advertised.
Please put it in your calendars if it's not already in there. We did receive the capital.
So, next week on 22nd?
Yes, at 4:00 PM.
It's on a Wednesday.
Yeah, um, we did receive the capital reserve study, I sent it to you all, I met with Carol. If any of you others would like to meet and discuss that report, I'd be more than happy to meet with you. So, I did pencil that in for you guys for the, the, the March workshop. If you don't wanna have a workshop on it, please let me know and we'll just, we'll remove it. But, um, as part of that, I wanna kind of introduce our draft capital improvement plan that staff has been working on for the past couple of months. It's a very comprehensive, um, I, we're finalizing it tomorrow, or not finalizing, but final draft of it tomorrow with, um, I gotta sit down with Keith, but this, it's, I'd like to talk about both, um, at, at that workshop. You'll see the things that we have coming in front of you. We've got quite a few bids out, wrapping up, starting new projects, continuing projects through designs. I have penciled in for the April board workshop, which I don't, you, you don't see it here, is a fee schedule discussion. District-wide fee schedule discussion, that's, that's the permit criteria manual, that's the utility rules, that's our general fee schedule. I'd like to start discussing those fees as, as we're amping up for budget for next year and hopefully get some of those approved sooner than later, um, because of timing of just operations and things like that. So, um, I'd like to have a discussion on the fee schedule in April. And then, of course, we have our president's council the end of, uh, next month. If you have anything else that you'd like for staff to work on, um, or an idea, please, again, this is the time to mention it and get consensus from the board.
I don't have any.
No, I think, no, good.
Okay.
I think the capital reserve is a project totally in and of itself.
It is.
To, to talk about, both on the general side and on the, uh, utility side.
Yeah.
There's a lot of decisions we gotta make is, are we gonna 100% fund the reserve? Are we gonna fund 50%?
Yeah.
And with that thing, heavy-loaded, this is the craziest looking thing I've ever seen in my life. Heavy-loaded front, heavy-loaded rear.
Yeah.
Which means you end up and you're gonna have a lot of residents in here. You, you people are setting on $10 million? We don't trust any politician with $10 million. How do we get around that?
Yeah.
How do we get around that? So, those are some of the things we're gonna run into.
As soon as we.
These are big, big numbers.
As soon as we get the, the CIP completed, um, you already have a copy of the reserve study, but as soon as we try to get this draft CIP, it, it's an Excel workbook, it's a massive workbook. I'll send it to you all and if you have any questions, um, you can let me know. General rule of thumb is for, for the CIP, any singular item over $2,500 is on this list. So, it is a very comprehensive list that we've been working on and, and it is, you will have a sticker shock. So, I will just warn you now.
And that's, that's not inclusive of the enterprise, which we just authorized.
That is, from a staff perspective, it is.
But I mean, you're, you're maintaining that same theory, $2,500.
Yes, yes.
A lot of items.
That's, I, that's the IRS code for depreciation, I think.
And we're looking at 20 or 25 years, 25?
10.
We're starting with 10.
Starting with 10. Many of the things go beyond 10, the, you, we're putting in what we project as the useful life of each item, like our Thompson pumps last 15 to 20 years.
Well, your sewers, your sewers, your water lines, they're 50 to 100 years.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we'll go to supervisor comments?
Yes, um, the, I will not be here at either meeting in the month of August. I will be on vacation and out of the country, in fact, through a lot of things that happened that we didn't think were going to happen. But anyway, if there would be any way that we could finish up the budgeting process before the end of July, I would really like, I mean, I really wanna dig into the budget and, uh, work on it. I don't know if that's possible or not, but, um, and of course, you, you all can just finish it off if you want me to.
As it did last year, that would be a hell of a lot easier.
Smoother.
Two years ago, there ain't nowhere to hell.
Well.
It's possible.
Battle Royale, now it's better.
I mean, I'll, I'll be happy to start in March anytime you want to or the end of this month.
If you could let us know, Laura's got a whole.
When you're gonna be gone, 'cause I have to back in, I have an entire schedule that is very time-sensitive, so, you can let me know when you're not gonna.
I will be here in the meetings in July, I'll be here in both meetings in September, but both of the meetings.
It has to be done before the end of August, so September's not an option.
Okay, but both of the meetings in August, I will not be here.
The board, the board can choose to have a separate budget workshop, so if, if, whatever specific date you, you're, you're flying out on August 1st, let us know what that specific date is, 'cause then we can try to, we can whip.
There's, there's a lot of moving parts. So, the sooner I know, the better.
Well, anyway, that, that was my only comment, I wanted to let you know and I'll be happy to start working anytime you want to.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good enough.
Ed?
Nothing.
I've got two things, uh, I've sent out a memo on, on some possible policy administration direction. Table that, at least for a meeting, maybe more, trying to resolve it outside of here. Second thing is the, uh, meeting with South Florida on the boardwalk. Have we got a meeting date or not yet for it?
I sent an email, uh, right after your, that Friday after your meeting, or it might have been the Monday after, I don't know. I sent an email, um, to South Florida, we went back and forth, um, trying to clarify some things and I asked, um, for a, to, to meet with him and if he had any additional questions, I will follow up with, with him tomorrow.
So, we still don't have a meeting yet, really?
No, I was trying to explain to him the history and kind of the impetus of, of where we are and, and how we got to where we are, so I didn't waste his time, hoping that he could give me an answer via email, but if we need to meet in person, we'll meet in person.
Okay, I'll wait and see what the result is.
She did a good job explaining kind of how we got where we are.
Okay, uh, that's all I got.
So, I just had just two, uh, one question and one upgrade, so the county's, uh, working already on the study to get those signs by both schools, then, no parking on standing?
Are you asking or telling?
No, I'm telling.
Okay, good.
So, we're waiting on that. They did, uh, Jillian did send me an email saying that all the missing signs for the elementary and the high school were put back in place like a few days after my last phone call with her. So, as soon as we hear from, as soon as I hear from her on her decision.
Did that include the crosswalk sign, 'cause that crosswalk sign is grossly low.
Well, that, that was not there because when I made the phone call, two days later, they were here.
Okay, 'cause it, it doesn't meet in U2C.
I did see the sign and I took a picture and sent it to Keith because I wasn't sure if our resin broke it and we're being nice and just shove it in. It, to me, it's actually a liability because now it blocks the view, it's literally three feet tall. So, you have the huge, so to me, I would have just removed it.
I noticed that today.
But I was told that staff, our staff did that.
Okay, so we'll have to notify the county that they need to raise it to the appropriate height.
No, that's.
It's not our crosswalk.
Oh, it's not, yeah, so I guess it would, yeah, so then, if you wanna do that or.
Yep, I'll note, I'll put it in RFA tomorrow.
And then the question I had is regarding the drone, 'cause I kinda wanna touch back on the ponds, 'cause I know it's gonna be time-consuming for Keith and I know we bought a drone, have we ever used it?
I have one.
Oh, yeah.
No, I only have one.
No, no, I have one, yeah.
Oh, we have one here.
I know, yeah.
And then I know staff was trained and certified on, on, on FA rules and everything else. Like, I would like to see.
And I, there's a question too on who is trained on staff?
El had training on it and Randy's able to.
Randy has it.
Yeah, I'd say we should have multiple individuals.
We do.
And I think Austin either is or is going to be trained on it, he has some interest in going out and doing the drones a lot. But Randy and El can both use it.
But are we using it? Like, I, I, I love that we're all trained, but are we using it? Because I know I mentioned before, we started '88 and '85, there would have been a great opportunity to go out, not wait for the vendor to provide us that information, I was to go out there, fly the drone and then, I mean, we did that on '83. We did it on, um, every 15 to 30 days, really, on our own, but it was, it was great.